We will get started. I believe the recording is in process. I did hear that. All right, so we will open this meeting. It is now 10:02 a.m. I would like to call to order this meeting of the WIFA Water Conservation Grant Committee. I will call role Blake Anderson. Sam Draper. Oh, did I hear Blake? Blake, Sam Draper.
Here.
Andrea Gerlach.
She won't be joining us.
Okay. Tim Grandy.
Here.
Rhett Larson.
Here.
Colin.
Here.
Erin Young.
Here.
And Kepchannick, I am here. Good morning. All right. With one, two, three, four, five, six, seven members, we have a quorum. Announcement, please remember to identify yourself when making a motion or requesting to speak. For those attending virtually, please ensure you are unmuted for any votes. In addition, if any member wishes to depart the meeting at any time, please announce your departure for our recorded meeting records. Let's see, item number two, disclosure of interests. Has WIFA staff received disclosures?
Morning, Josatelli, General Counsel. I have not seen any, but I will confess I am coming back from annual leave. So if anyone does need to disclose any conflicts of interest, now would be the time to do so.
Okay, I do believe I sent one for my conflict with Yavapai Apache Nation. I struggled with the form a lot.
You did it correctly.
So good, actually. Good. Glad that worked. Does anyone else have any disclosures they'd like to make?
I will note for the record that Blake Anderson has disclosed conflicts with the following: Sholo School District, City of Wilcox, Timberland Acres Dwyd, Voyager White Mountain Lakes Water Company, the Clay Springs Dwyd, and the Pinedale Estates Dwyd. And we do have that form on file.
Excellent, thank you. All right, I will, agenda item number three, I will pass it to Director McGuire. Congratulations to lead this discussion.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Shonik. And excited to be here and excited to have another opportunity to put some more conservation grant dollars on the ground here in Arizona. I do want to say before we get too far down the road, I appreciate everybody on this committee being willing essentially to drop everything and focus on the conservation grant program for a few weeks. As you can see, I hope by the level of preparation and the volume of materials that we gave to you all, the WIFA team has been extremely hard at work sorting through the demand that we've received for these additional resources. So I do want to say publicly just how much I appreciate Lindsay and her team, Amanda, John, Sam, Morgan, Lindsay, Michael, or Admin Brenda. They have been working tirelessly over the last few weeks. So thanks for getting this all ready for us to go and have this discussion and this study session here today. Just a couple of housekeeping items. I will note that this is a study session only, so votes will not be taken on applications today, but we will give the committee the opportunity to discuss these applications, the merits to truly hash out which ones they, you know, rise to the top and which ones they do eventually want to vote for at a meeting that we will hold virtually only on Monday. So you will not hear any votes or determinations, but you will have the opportunity to respond to questions from the committee. The committee will be able to ask questions both of applicants and staff and to have dialogue amongst themselves. I also do want to note, sorry, I lost my notes. I also do want to note that this meeting today and the additional resources that we have were made possible by Governor Hobbs and her team at the Office of Resiliency. We really appreciate them putting their faith in WIFA to endow us with these additional resources to continue the good work. You can see from the last round, we have $200 million in conservation grant projects awarded that are expected to save as much as five and a half million acre feet. And that's due to the work that our staff did, but mostly it's due to the work that you as applicants are doing and the commitment that you have to conservation and the willingness that you have to come down here and say, "We want these resources to do good projects." So I really appreciate that, and we're looking forward to getting some more of that money on the ground here relatively quickly. As an update to that, I did want to mention and just kind of give some context for a brief status on the first round of grants. So that first 200 million, give you an idea of our progress and how close we are to completion of these. Currently, our grantees have spent about $49 million of the 200 million that WIFA has awarded. So it's just under 25%. We did have a couple of committee members asking some very good, I think some very logical questions about the speed at which this money is moving. How quickly and how effectively are projects getting off the ground? And is there a correlation between certain types of projects, certain characteristics of grantees that are moving more quickly and more efficiently? Those are really good questions, but my answer to them is that, one, there's no through line. So in terms of which projects are moving faster or slower, we've got big systems and small systems that are done. We have big systems and small systems who are running into snags. There's no one type of project that's standing out as moving faster than the others. So it's really across the spectrum. If there is a through line, I would say it's really administrative. So recipients with the cleanest and most complete reimbursement packets are moving faster, but it's not really the characteristics of the grant itself. So that's something that, you know, just to answer that question, but probably unsatisfyingly answer the question that I've received from some committee members. On that note, though, I do want to make a couple of observations. So you'll remember that under ARPA rules, this is a cost expended reimbursement program. So our grantees are required to pay invoices, and then once they're paid, they submit to us for reimbursement. So of that 49 million that has been spent by our grantees, we've reimbursed, so actually cut checks for just over half of that, right at $25 million in requests. Of the 24 million remaining, about seven of that has been submitted to the governor's office for processing, and the remainder is still with WIFA for additional action. If you want to acknowledge publicly that we know a lot of our grantees have been frustrated with lack of speed, WIFA's kind of repeated requests for documentation. We hear that, we understand that, and we've made some changes that we're really optimistic about speeding up that process for current reimbursements and future reimbursements. And a couple of those changes that I'll highlight. One is a brand new reimbursement guide that was sent out to all applicants via email last week, two weeks ago. So you should have that in your email. It's got a lot of really good information about the kinds of documentation we need and the form in which we need that. But the other thing that I will mention is that we are finally fully staffed on the projects team. And so we do have Amanda, our grants coordinator, who came in at a very interesting time, Amanda. So she's been hitting the ground running quite literally. And I think both of those things combined with additional more clarity and communication with our applicants and grantees, and then also Amanda's work in being able to shepherd all of that, really do expect to see some more expediency, some more speed in those application processes, those reimbursement processes. Now, with all of that, I will just do sort of one final reminder or refresher for the committee, and that is regarding the evaluation criteria that we're looking at. I just provided some context about sort of timelines and reimbursements and what's moving quickly and what's not. And I think all of that is helpful context, but we need to examine the timelines that are set forth by the applications you'll discuss today. That definitely goes to the feasibility to number seven on this list of criteria. Can those projects be completed by June 30th, 2026? And then all of the other criteria as well that are outlined in the application and in the summary materials that staff has provided you. I do want to caution, though, against drawing conclusions about one application because of past performance of a similarly situated applicant, right? Your task is to evaluate the application in front of you on its face. If you do have questions about an individual applicant's ability to carry out the project or program they've proposed, that's entirely relevant to feasibility. The speed at which other projects are moving is not relevant to feasibility. So I'm just making that clarification to show that I didn't share that information to try to give you sort of the red thread board of, you know, which is going to move faster and how do we secure this? This really is every individual application on its face. And so that's what we'll be looking at under the evaluation criteria lined out here. Madam Chair, that is all I have for my update, but I'm happy to take any questions from the committee.
Any questions for Chelsea from the committee? Thank you.
I'm actually...
Go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate what somewhat Chelsea said, but good job to staff for putting this all together. I mean, I was going through these documents this past week, and it's incredible that in a month you were able to process all this and give us the information in a timely fashion. So kudos to all WIFA staff.
Thank you. And actually, Madam Chair, I'm going to interrupt. I did remember one thing I did want to say to applicants specifically. So as we move to your application, I will be looking at the attendees list for online attendees to determine which of you are here to represent your application. So if you can just change your Zoom name to something that makes it very clear which application you are here to represent, that would be really helpful. What I will do is enable your mic, then you'll be able to unmute and answer any questions from the committee if those arise. So just a quick little housekeeping item on how we will allow the online attendees to participate seamlessly.
Great, thank you. All right, we're going to move into our regular agenda items. But first, on behalf of WIFA and the Water Conservation Grant Fund Committee, I'd like to thank everyone who applied for these new grant funds. As was the case during our previous funding cycle, we received significantly more applications than there are funding to fill those applications. And also like the last cycle, these grants are funded with ARPA dollars and are subject to ARPA deadlines and requirements. Given that, the deadline to spend these grant funds is only slightly more than a year away. You may see a different tone in some of the questions we ask of applicants this time around. Specifically, the committee may place additional importance on the feasibility of projects and program applications, especially the ability to complete the proposed project within the prescribed timelines. I will also note that for today's study session, the committee will be conducting a review only of the applications on the agenda. We will not vote to recommend any applications to the WIFA board during today's session. Finally, for reference for applicants with us today, the committee will use the following framework to review applications. First, staff will present applications to the committee, followed by a period of general discussion amongst committee members. After that discussion, applicants may be invited to address the committee if the committee has specific questions for the applicant. So that's really important. You are not going to be asked to give an overview. If we don't have questions, maybe assume it's because you did a great job in your application, not because we don't care. We have a lot to get through, so I just really want to reiterate the importance of that. When we do call you up, please answer the questions, not give a speech. I'm going to use my gavel. Applicants, next, the committee will have an opportunity to identify any co-benefits for the staff to include for the board's review. Finally, we will open an opportunity for public comment on the application, which will be limited to three minutes per commenter. You need to submit for that public comment period prior to your item coming up. So if you have particular comments that you want to make, that public comment period is available, but again, please be respectful. If there's something you urgently need to include there, that is where you can do it. The committee will review the information submitted in the applications and received during today's meeting prior to making their recommendation during the April 7th committee meeting. All right, I think with that, any questions from the committee on the structure for today's discussion?
Madam Chair, Erin Young?
Yes.
I missed it, I guess. How much money do we have the second time around?
I think it's approximately 14 million. Is it exactly, or?
That's correct, Madam Chair. So it is a $14.1 million funding round this time.
Good I asked, because I was thinking it was like 50.
If only. Slightly less.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good clarification. Other clarifications, questions? All right, I will turn it over to Lindsay for our agenda item four.
All right, thank you so much, Madam Chair. So Lindsay Jones. I will be presenting on our application list and just kind of give a few brief updates on where we're at today. So on the screen, you'll see the map and the overview of the graph of the types of applications we received in this round. We got over 60 applications with requests for over $60 million in requests. So as we just stated, we have $14.1 million to award, which means a large amount of these are going to be denied, and that's simply because we don't have enough funds to award all of these applications in front of us. So it is certainly going to be a difficult task for the committee to decide. But I do want to reiterate the thank you that Chelsea said to staff to get us to the point where we are today. It's been a lot of work. We were awarded these grant funds from the governor in late December, and the fact that we're here in early April, presenting them all to you, I think, is a huge testament to the staff's work as well as to all of the applicants who are willing to put in the work to put in these applications with not much time to put them together and not much time to plan on spending these funds. So just acknowledging the incredible amount of work that we were, has been achieved to get here, as well as the fact that we are hopeful that this is going to be a continued grant program. We will continue to get funds, and we hope that for anyone who is denied at the end of this round keeps an eye out for future solicitations for more funds that will hopefully be coming through. So for the application list, though, we have 66 applications for consideration. They are from requests from just about every county in the state. Large amount of requests for advanced meters and system upgrades, a good amount of requests for agricultural system upgrades, as well as turf removal and recharge and reuse, and then a small number for efficient fixtures and vegetation management slash other. For the plan for today, we are going to focus on all of the categories except for advanced meter and system upgrades, which we will discuss on Friday. You will see in the application, in the materials for the committee, that there are several evaluation forms that have staff recommended reduced amounts. So I'll just say now, before we get into the details of them all, we are occasionally recommending to reduce the cost because they either, if staff believes they're ineligible, or they appear like they're going to occur outside of the allowable timeframe for this grant, which, as we said previously, it's a very aggressive timeframe to spend all of these funds by the end of June of 2026. Additionally, we did have some staff recommendations to reduce costs because of the limitations of what a single program could receive within this conservation program. So a program is an activity that occurs in multiple phases over an established timeframe and may result in multiple deliverables and could get up to $3 million maximum per program, whereas a project could get up to $250,000 max and is particular time and place with a single deliverable. This was a very difficult evaluation process to look at the, especially the repeat applicants, to determine if these are for the same program or new programs. So we appreciate applicants' understanding as staff really work through all of those questions. As far as the plan for today, we're going to start off with the turf removal projects. And then I think we'll, we have kind of a planned break. We'll see how far we can get through those. But I do plan to go pretty quickly through my overview of the applications. At any time, though, just ask questions if we have them, and we should have all of the applicants available, as stated, if there are questions. So with that, I'll close and just ask if there's any general questions about the entire application list. I will also mention we included in the committee materials the conservation policy. This was previously approved and is currently in place. The policy for this fund is just included as a reminder of the existing policy. And importantly, in Section 3, it really highlights the evaluation and award process that we're going through right now. So that's just included as a reminder, but if there's any questions on the materials for this agenda item, please let me know.
Committee members, any questions? All right, let's see. We will move on to agenda item number five. We are going to start with turf removal grant applications. So we're going to start with review of application WC 7345, 2025, Town of Queen Creek.
All right, thank you. So agenda item 5.1 is for Town of Queen Creek. For $50,000 grant request, their activity will establish a turf removal rebate program for water customers. The residents would be incentivized at a rate of $2 per square foot or 75% of the project cost, whichever is lower. And each site would be limited to a maximum rebate of 5,000. And artificial turf would be limited to 1,000 square feet. Staff did recommend reducing the match amount required for this to exclude the customer contributions that the applicant had included, simply because we believed it would pose challenges when requesting reimbursement for the grant and providing documentation of the proof of matching funds. Otherwise, I think that was my main notes for that, and happy to take any questions.
Wonderful, thank you. Let me... And so just to clarify, on this one, you had a reduced amount from the applicant's requested amount? Or from their matching requirement?
Just from the match amount. It would not impact their grant amount. They had more than the 25% required for match amount provided, so reducing it would not impact the grant amount.
Okay, great, thank you. So we will move to a discussion among the committee. Does the committee have any initial comments? Erin, go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just a question. The decision support tool is really, really helpful. Thank you so, so much. I just noticed that previously awarded grant fund for this one, nothing is listed, but it's, there's dollars listed for the other Queen Creek projects. Is that just?
And so this is for Town of Queen Creek? The other ones are for Queen Creek Unified School District, I believe, is what you're looking at.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, does anyone have questions for the applicant? I felt this was a pretty straightforward proposal with quite a bit of information in it. It seemed to be relatively cost effective and have a high likelihood of success. Okay, would any committee member like to identify co-benefits for this project? Just remember, in the past, some of the co-benefits we have talked about are meeting Colorado River requirements. We've talked about cost effectiveness. We've talked about groundwater, rural communities, those sorts of things. We want to be fairly succinct. So any co-benefits anybody would like to identify?
Madam Chair, Erin Young, saving Colorado River water, groundwater, and effluent.
Great, thank you.
And another co-benefit is they did not receive funding in the first round.
I think that's great, a new applicant. All right, let's see. Are there any specific concerns anyone would like to highlight with this application? Okay, are there any public comments on this application?
Madam Chair, we've not received any requests for public comment.
Excellent, then we will move to our next application.
Madam Chair, I do have a quick question for the applicant, and I'm sorry if I missed the opportunity. I'm just curious if any of the rebate goes towards the conversion to artificial turf?
One moment, we will...
And I can probably answer that for them.
Answer them.
So yes, they did include, and it's in the summary there, that artificial turf would be included but would be limited to 1,000 square feet per rebate.
So some of the funding would go towards allowing the conversion, including artificial turf? All right, thank you.
And if we want the applicant to...
Did you, did you want additional information from the applicant, Erin, or is that sufficient?
That's sufficient.
Okay, great, thank you. Last call for Town of Queen Creek. Okay, we will move to Queen Creek Unified School District. Lindsay will probably do this, but I will highlight it very quickly that there are three applications here from Queen Creek Unified School District.
That is correct. So I'll start with 5.2, which was their application for removal of the existing football field at the Crimson High School. An applicant proposes to convert the Crimson High School grass football field to artificial turf and additionally plan to extend their work with the Fusebox LLC, to further expand water monitoring efforts in order to promote water conservation and evaluate further water savings initiatives. We did have a staff recommendation to reduce this one, as well as the following two applications, and that is due to Queen Creek Unified School District receiving a previous grant for $2.7 million to do the, for the same program. And so staff's recommendation is that the additional funds could receive up to $300,000, so the maximum $3 million per program, and it would be $100,000 for each application or up to $300,000 for one application. We did, let's see. We did correct the water savings for this application as well, just slightly, based on what the applicant reported water savings was from 13 acre feet to 10 acre feet, just based on their description of how they calculated it. So happy to take any questions on that. Otherwise, I'll turn it back over to you, Kim.
Great, can you confirm how much of the previous amount has already been spent?
Let me check that.
Okay, great. While you're checking that, I do have a question for the applicant, if they are available.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. So if you are the applicant here from Queen Creek Unified School District, if you could use the raise hand feature on Zoom, so I know who to unmute, that would be extremely helpful. We do not have a name in front of us, so... All right, looks like we don't have anybody with their hand raised, but go ahead and keep going, and I'll try to...
All right, great. And I think our primary question is, would they be able to move forward with the reduced amount? That's my primary question. So if we're not able to get them today, perhaps we can email them. Okay, are there other comments from the committee on this application?
Kim, I do have that information for you. It does look like it's approximately 20% of the current grant has been spent from the...
Okay, so 20% has been spent, and when did that start?
When did they start spending money? Well, that makes me have to look up something else.
Oh, that's okay, good. I don't think it matters.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, other questions on this application? Would anybody like to identify concerns related to this application? Tim, go ahead.
So that is the final correct figure on cost per acre foot, the 7691 to 11537.
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think in general on this application, you know, it is a repeat. There are multiple applications continuing in the program. That is a relatively high cost per acre foot number. In terms of benefits, I think it's a project supporting a school district, you know, reaching out to children and providing that education is useful. Are there other co-benefits or concerns committee members would like to identify?
Madam Chair, Erin Young. I just, I have a hard time supporting artificial turf projects. I mean, especially with all the other projects we're seeing. So I'll just make a blanket statement for all of them that I've reviewed.
Perfect, thank you. And Erin, do you want to add any more context to that, or just generally?
Just that the, I keep hearing issues with the heat of projected off artificial turf and the concerns that it's harder on, harder on the kids playing the sport, just harder on their body, playing on artificial turf. So I'm just concerned I would actually, if we were to look at these in the future, appreciate maybe an education on like the range of artificial turf materials and the, you know, if there's a range in quality. Also the concern with, you know, PFOS coming off of turf, plastic, the impact that it has on the soil underneath, and, you know, maybe the... the impact that it has on the soil underneath and, you know, maybe the environment underneath, bugs and such that are healthy in soils, just kind of would appreciate an education on it, I think.
Thank you, yeah, and I just, I think it would be great, once we have some of these projects completed, we're going to have a wide range of examples to review next year. So we will, we will have a lot of information. All right. Do we have any public comment on this application?
Refreshing the form. No, Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay, make sure your thing is green.
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
You'll get me at least a few times, so I want to get them one time. All right. We will move on to the next application, which is also Queen Creek Unified School District.
All right, thank you. So this is agenda item 5.3 for the school district's turf removal program at their Eastmark High School. They plan to convert the Eastmark High School's grass football field to artificial turf and extend their work with Fusebox LLC. Similar to the past application, staff is recommending a reduced amount to make sure that they don't go over the 3 million per program limits. And similarly, we also corrected the water savings for this application.
Great, and do we have an applicant here yet? Okay. Does any committee member wish to add specific discussion or concerns related to this application? I would say my previous concerns and comments apply to this as well, as well as the co-benefits I mentioned. Are there any additional co-benefits committee members would like to mention for this project? Are there any public comments for this application? Okay, we will continue to the third Queen Creek Unified School District.
All right. So this one is for their turf program of new football field at Crimson High School. So similar to before, staff recommendation was to reduce, to limit it for the 3 million per program. This one is slightly different from the previous two, as this is to construct a new football field instead of converting a existing field. And they plan to put in the artificial turf for that new field. We did additionally though, correct the water savings as with the past two.
Excellent. I'm going to assume we still don't have the applicant, but you'll let me know if I'm wrong. All right. Would any committee member like to add discussion or concerns related to this application?
This is Sam Draper, just flagging that distinction that this is a new field that's going in. They're not updating something, they're putting something new in, and that doesn't feel like new conservation to me.
Excellent, thank you. Great note. Okay. Any additional co-benefits anyone would like to identify for this project? All right. Is there any public comment for this application?
Madam Chair, there is not.
Excellent, thank you. We will move to Payson Unified School District.
All right, thank you. So agenda item 5.5 is Payson Unified School District. They requested 1.75 million for converting their existing football field at Payson High School to artificial turf. Staff did recommend a reduction to 250,000 because viewed this as a single conservation project and not a conservation program. Otherwise, I think it was a fairly straightforward application, so beyond that reduction.
Excellent, thank you. Is the applicant available? You're here, excellent, thank you. Please come on up. While they're coming up, Lindsay, I did have one question. The cost per acre foot amount, is that based on the staff recommended or the applicant request?
It is based on the staff recommended, but the total project cost is based on there. So we would be taking credit for a portion of the total cost, the with attributed portion.
Okay, so this is based on the total project cost?
Right.
Yes, okay. So that cost per acre foot is the same, but the number of acre feet we would get remains.
Right.
Okay, right. Thank you, that is what I thought. All right. Great, thank you. Could you speak to the reduced amount? Would you be able to move forward with this project at that reduced amount? Okay. Are there other potential funding sources you think you could pull in to make up that difference?
We've also applied for the WSCF, the grant application in combination. Then yes, we could move forward with the combination of the two.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, ladies. Oh, did we need their names for the record? Could you please introduce yourselves?
Yes, Lynda Gibson.
And I'm Ashley Brownlee.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair? Sorry to interrupt, I couldn't hear them very well online. I don't know if maybe the microphone isn't on.
Says it's on, but can you hear better now, Erin?
A little bit. I didn't actually get the answer if they are able to move forward.
No.
Okay.
They would be unable to move forward without additional funding. So they have one application into, what was the other source?
The Water Supply Development.
Water Supply Development Fund.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies?
Would you like us to turn this on?
Yes, please. And thank you for driving down. We know it's a journey. All right. Is there any discussion or concerns related to this application from committee members? Okay. I think my primary concern would be the funding package is incomplete at this amount. Co-benefits would be related to, you know, the school base, the education, a rural community benefiting from this project. Are there other concerns or co-benefits committee members would like to identify?
Rural groundwater savings and just our new applicant.
Excellent, thank you, good for catching that.
This is Sam. We haven't talked about counties at all yet today, so I'm going to give a shout to Hila County.
Perfect. Is it, it might be our only one in Hila. There might have been another in Hila. Oh, there's a lot in Hila.
Yeah.
Good job, Hila County. All right. Are there any public comments related to this application?
We have none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any last thoughts on this one before we move to the next? We are getting through these today, guys, good job. We will move to Apache Junction Unified School District.
All right, agenda item 5.6 for Apache Junction Unified School District. They requested 1.8 million to convert their existing football field at the Apache Junction High School to artificial turf. Similar to the previous application, staff did recommend to reduce that to 250,000, since we viewed this application as for a single project and not a conservation program. Otherwise, a fairly straightforward application.
Great, is the applicant available?
Once again, if you are the applicant for Apache Junction or whatever conservation grant application we are discussing at the moment, please use the raise hand feature if you're here with us on Zoom, so that we'll know who's mic to unmute if the committee does have questions. But right now, Madam Chair, I do not see the applicant available.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion or concerns related to this application from committee members? I think my primary concern related to this application will be similar in terms of, will they be able to move forward with a significantly reduced grant amount? So if we can't get that answer today, perhaps we can email them and get that update on Friday. All right. Any other concerns or discussion on this application? Co-benefits for this application?
This is Sam, conserving groundwater in Pinal County.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Any public comment for this application?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any last comments on this one or we'll move on? Okay, we will move to City of Surprise.
All right, agenda item 5.7, we have the City of Surprise for their expanded HOA multifamily commercial turf removal rebate program. They are requesting $337,000, or $337,500 to expand their turf removal rebates for HOAs, commercial properties and buildings, and building on the success of the current program. This activity will remove approximately over 300,000 square feet of turf at a $3 per square foot program. This was previously funded, but with this additional request, they would still be well below the $3 million limit. And then otherwise, I think fairly straightforward.
See, do we have the applicant here for City of Surprise?
We do, Madam Chair.
Oh, wonderful. So could you go ahead and introduce yourself, please?
Sure, my name is Sandra Hobart, I'm the Water Conservation Specialist for the city.
Great, thank you. And Blake, I see your hand up. Did you have a question for the applicant or a discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to hear how the existing program was going, that you guys are already doing, if this is an expansion of that. Where are you at in the process? What's the response been? Also, I just wanted to note on this one application, I noticed that this is one of the only ones that doesn't include staff as part of it. It's just all the money goes directly to the rebate program, and so I thought, I appreciate that personally.
Yeah, those are all excellent questions. So actually, we have done stellar with our rebate program. As a matter of fact, we only have one more category of rebates to complete, or excuse me, one more rebate in all of our categories to complete, which is one HOA turf. So we had four different categories. We had a single-family turf, we had an HOA turf, we had irrigation controllers, and then zero scape. And all of them have been completely done. We're essentially a year ahead of completing this grant, which is why we decided to focus on the HOAs, because there was a number of HOAs that we only had a limited amount of turf space available to remove. We only granted them 6,000 square feet at $2 per square foot. And so there's a lot of excess HOA turf to be removed and some that we could still bring in from these other projects. That's why we focused on just the HOA turf for this kind of expansion of that program. And the reason why we chose to just fund it with money as the match, as opposed to personnel time and stuff, is because it was getting really crazy. I mean, I literally had, we had hundreds and hundreds of controller applications and things coming through. So it got a little bit crazy for our business services team, and so they just said, you know what? No more of that, we're just going to give money towards this for the grant, for the match, and then we can just kind of go forward with it, because it was becoming, you know, kind of a staff resource issue on their end. So we're well ahead of this, and one of the things that also I'll mention is we are planning on doing a special interest application for these HOAs in advance. So like if we did get lucky enough to get selected, we would have a queue of applicants in, you know, kind of in the works, that once we got the go-ahead, we would basically just roll them out and say, okay, now go. So that's part of what we're trying to do, is set up a special meeting and a special interest application so that the HOAs, the multifamilies could come in, fill those out. They're going to be separate from our current rebate system, because I don't want them kind of like mucking up my rebate system, but we'll have them on hand, and once we get the word, if we get the word, we can just say, okay, go forth and take out the turf, and then we'll be that much further ahead.
Great, thank you. Blake, did that cover your questions?
Yes, it did, thank you.
Great, thank you, and my question was very similar. Erin, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if artificial turf is part of the range of what people can install? Or is it all zero scape?
What we've experienced, we don't have any artificial turf in our HOA rebate kind of requirements or parameters. There is an allowance for single families, but what I've noticed is every one of the HOA rebates that have come through so far hasn't done anything with artificial turf. It's just all going to zero scape. They're basically focusing on non-functional turf, you know, so the slopes and the sides and the places where the doggies don't go and the kitties don't go and that kind of stuff. So I don't think there'd be any incentive for them to put artificial turf in those locations.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sam.
Hi, this is Colin Woganstall. My question for you is, do you have any prohibitions on the installation of new turf in the city? So for new developments or anything like that?
Um, I, that is not a question that I would know, because I don't do the development component. I'm just the water, I'm just the Water Conservation Specialist.
Thank you.
I don't have an answer. I could get that answer for you folks, though. I don't think any of my other team members are on right now, but.
Sam?
Hi, this is Sam. Could you remind me, is surprise regulated under the non-per capita conservation program?
I believe yes.
Is this a best management practice that you would be reporting on?
We just did our, are doing our ADWR report, and that was yes, turf removal is one of the ones that is part of the BMPs that we reported on.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you so much. Moving on to questions or comments about this application by the committee members. Go ahead, Rhett.
This is Rhett Larson. So I, I have some minor reservations about rebate programs in terms of the speed at which they can be implemented, but knowing that this one has a queue that's ready to go, and that its past efforts have shown that it's able to move fast, I think that's worth noting. I also think that the fact that this one's focusing on HOAs in particular might be a good thing. We've seen HOAs throughout the valley that are sort of dragging their feet in terms of making shifts, so this may be a bit of a carrot for HOAs to start changing policies on zero scaping within them, which might have cascading effects in the way that their residents within the HOA can also shift their landscaping to more efficient approaches. So I think helping HOAs make this shift may have broader sort of external benefits that aren't necessarily captured in this program.
Excellent, thank you, I concur with that. Any specific concerns other applicants would like to call out? All right, co-benefits, anyone would like to call out?
This is Rhett Larson, Conservation of Colorado River Water and Groundwater.
Thank you. Are there any public comments for this application?
We do not have any public comment requests, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Last call for thoughts on this application. Erin, I see you off mute, so go ahead.
Oh, yeah, thanks. I guess it was already stated, and I didn't know if it'd be incorporated, but I do appreciate that it's building on an existing successful program, and that it seems if provided the funding, it's ready to go with a list of applicants.
All right. We will now move to Town of Queen Creek.
Thank you, so we have agenda item 5.8 for the Town of Queen Creek for their non-residential turf conversion incentive program. They requested 500,000 to establish a turf removal rebate program for HOAs, businesses, and institutions to remove non-functional turf. For this one, they did include 125,000 for match from customer contributions. Unlike the previous Town of Queen Creek application, we didn't recommend reducing that to remove the customer contributions, since it, those, that amount would be required to meet the minimum match requirement. However, we do know it may pose additional difficulties when submitting for reimbursement on this grant program. Other than that, though, that was all my notes for you.
Thank you. Any questions for Lindsay on this application? Okay. Do we have the applicant?
Madam Chair, I don't see the applicant's representative that we have listed here online.
Oh, we have someone. Go ahead, come on up. I thought you all were just here as an audience. You're all hoping to participate.
This is a thrilling way to start a Tuesday.
I know, I know.
So as you're coming up, you will just need to switch the microphone on to make sure that the light's green, and then we should be able to hear you in the room and online.
Okay, can y'all hear us, okay?
Yeah, can you go ahead and introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, my name is Sarah Gordon. I am a Water Conservation Specialist at the Town of. of Queen Creek.
And I am Deana Burns, the Water Conservation Program Manager for the town.
Great, thank you. Erin, go ahead.
Well, thank you. I'm curious if you have an idea of participation if this program launches.
Yes, so the amount that we are requesting is based on anticipated participation. We are a pretty new town, we're a pretty new utility, and we have primarily been working with our commercial customers using a water budgeting platform, Water Fluence. And Robert, who's sitting in the back from our team, has been doing a lot of really close work, especially with our HOAs, to develop those relationships. And we have heard time and time and time again from them how very interested they are in utilizing and us having a rebate for them to do turf conversions. So we have a list of very interested parties that we're already aware of, and we've been in communication with them about the fact that we've applied for this funding, so that they can sort of pre-prep and just start thinking about projects, knowing that it does have a quick turnaround in time.
So, a follow-up question. You are a relatively new town, so the fact that water is limited is not new news. So why are these HOAs going in with high amounts of turf, and now wanting to come back and get a rebate to do it?
I would say that a lot of these HOAs were developed before the concerns were as heightened as they are today. Additionally, the developers wanted to create a more inviting community to attract people to purchase the homes. And now you have a lot of the HOAs that are now taking ownership of those developments and those landscapes that they have to continue to manage into the long term. And because we do have the budgeting program, they've identified that it's very hard for them to get their budgets down to where they need to be without doing conversions. So, just because we've been putting that effort with them to identify these areas, and there's a decent amount, I should say significant amount, of non-functional turf areas that we think can also be removed and converted over as well.
Thank you. Colin, go ahead.
So, kind of as a follow-up to Kim's question, this is the same question that we just asked Surprise, but do you have any prohibitions on the installation of turf in new HOAs or commercial areas that are being developed in Queen Creek?
As of right now, no. As Sarah mentioned, we are a very new community, just incorporated in '89, and then the town didn't actually purchase the water system until 2008. So previously, we were just doing smaller BMPs. They only had one conservation staff person. The town's focus has adjusted, but we had just very recently, within the six months, built our staffing to be three now. That's including myself. So now we're much more focused on getting these efforts to move forward. And I'm sorry, I just lost track of your question again.
Prohibitions on installation of new turf?
So we are currently looking at our ordinances, our area designs, and we've been working with our planning and development. We have not put anything into effect yet, but the expectation is that within the next few months, we'll be taking some things forward to cancel. We have mentioned to cancel already, just letting them know that we are looking at some of the existing ordinances and rules. And there isn't really anything requiring them to install a lot of grass. This is more of a decision that happens at the developer level, when they're designing those landscapes. But we want to put minimums, or I'm sorry, maximums in, especially with a percentage perspective. We've been looking at the Fifth Management Plan and Chapter Six, and there's all of the allotment indications. So, at the very least, we want to minimize their open space turf areas to 30% of the overall landscapable area, so that we meet that lower expectation from the Fifth Management Plan.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions from the applicant? Or for the applicant? All right, thank you both.
I know you said no major speeches, and I don't want to give you a speech, but I did want to speak to Erin's comment about the artificial turf.
We're not going to get into debate, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Sorry, we have too many.
Gotcha.
All right, we are going to move to discussions or concerns for the applicant, application? I think, let's see. I think it is an interesting point that it is the developers that are doing this, and then the HOAs taking over. I'm really struggling with how to balance that. I don't have any specific concerns related to this application. Co-benefits, it is a good project in terms of conserving Colorado River groundwater and effluent. Are there other specific concerns committee members would like to call out? Okay, any co-benefits committee members would like to call out?
This is Sam. I will call out that it's a best manager practice, Colorado River Water, Groundwater, and Effluent. And then I appreciated that there, that the town has a relationship with Water Fluence, doing all the tracking in the water budgets, so that if they are converting, that hopefully those HOAs would be competing with each other on a dashboard to be the biggest water efficiency-er.
It's like e-birds for the cities, the most sightings. We have too many applications for that, Sam. Okay, all right. Do we have any public comments on this application?
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay, any additional thoughts, comments, co-benefits from committee members?
Madam Chair, I have a quick question for Sam. Sam, do you know, are they in the AMA Queen Creek, and maybe participating?
I'm going to say this to Colin, because he can confirm. I believe they're in the Phoenix AMA, and they're regulated under that non-per-capita program. Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so hopefully this is a BMP under that, and I think that's a great benefit.
Great, thanks for catching that. All right, we are going to move to the City of Wilcox.
Thank you. So we have Agenda Item 5.9, City of Wilcox. They are requesting just over $647,000 for funding for smart irrigation systems, turf removal, drought-tolerant landscaping, rainwater harvesting at public parks and facilities. So they're doing all sorts of different activities. We did put this one under the turf removal category, although acknowledged they are also doing a few different activities within this. But their overall effort is to reduce groundwater use and integrate water resources into long-term conservation strategies. Let's see, I think that was all my notes for you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Lindsay on this one? I do have one question. So they have been previously awarded $2.5 million over three different grants. Have they been making progress on spending those down?
Let me check on that.
Okay, thank you. And while she's doing that, do we have the applicant here?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. Caleb Losky is here.
Hi, Caleb.
Hi.
Question, can you go ahead and introduce yourself real quick?
Yes, Caleb Losky, Wilcox City Manager.
Thank you. Can you speak to how much actual turf is on these sites? I looked on Google Earth, and it was not glowing green fields. So can you speak to how much turf there is actually in place that would be getting watered or getting replaced?
Yes, and so, we, we have four parks right now, Keeler Park, Quell Park, Railroad Park, and Gonzalez Park. Those four parks, we received a previous grant with smart irrigation systems to put in, or to install smart irrigation systems. And so, when we, when we went out and engineered that and designed it, we actually reduced the size of the irrigation systems, and, and so there'll be four acres of turf removal in those areas. And so it's a total of four acres according to our engineer plans.
Okay, thank you.
That wasn't included in the first grant, so this, that's, it's more, it's a lot of turf removal.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Rhett.
Is there any funds allocated or any program that already exists outside of this funding package for you to track the water savings?
With, with our new irrigate, well, with our new meters that we just installed, we'll be able to track all of the water savings. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, thanks.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you, Caleb. Okay. Discussion or concerns of this application? I do appreciate that it is a rural community. I do think we have awarded several grants to the Wilcox area in the past, and that's not to say we can't do more. But I do think that's something that, you know, I'm considering in here, is if the applicant is new, I think that that is a good thing. Okay, other thoughts related to this application or co-benefits? Go ahead, Rhett.
So, co-benefits include conservation of groundwater within a new active management area, and also, some of this is being provided in two colonious neighborhoods, so these are neighborhoods that are in unique needs.
Okay, and then Lindsay, were we able to see how far along they are?
Yeah, so they have the three awarded grants. We have one, they're at 33%. The next one is at 46%, and then the third one, I'm just struggling to find, but they did recently submit a request for reimbursement. So they are progressing, but the dollar amount, I'm...
That's okay, so, so making progress?
Yes.
On significant headway, okay? Thank you.
If I could just say, the cemetery is being completed this week. Our irrigation contract, we're, smart irrigation contract, we enter into that at a special meeting tonight. And then, so we just have to do a change order for the additional turf removal, and the, we're almost finishing up on the other one as well. So we're just about to turn in all those receipts and complete those out.
Great, thank you, Caleb. Erin, I see your hand up.
Yeah, and just, the money would be going to the school district, or to the, in the decision tool, it's not showing that there was dollars previously awarded.
So this one is for City of Wilcox, and I think it is just missing in that decision support tool.
You are correct, and we will get that corrected.
Yeah.
And it is for the city, though. The following one is for the school.
This is the city of, and Erin, on the decision tool, if you go to the awarded grants as of March 2025, you can pull theirs up. So I think it just got missed on the decision tool tab.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, any additional thoughts or comments on this application? Okay, any public comment received on this application?
We have no requests for public comment, Madam Chair.
Excellent, last thoughts on this one. Now we will move to Wilcox Unified School District.
All right, so Agenda Item 5.10, this is for Wilcox Unified School District to convert approximately 22 acres of turf across their five school campuses into low-water-use desert landscaping. They'll also include smart irrigation systems for their ball fields and their playgrounds. They are requesting just over $1.3 million and have a match amount of just over $454,000, and otherwise, a fairly straightforward application.
Is the applicant available for this?
I don't see the name of the applicant contact online, but I do see someone who's raised their hand, so I'm going to go ahead and allow that person, or, excuse me. I see T's iPhone. I'm going to go ahead and allow T's iPhone to speak.
Good morning, afternoon.
We're not quite to afternoon yet, thankfully. Would you go ahead and introduce yourself, please?
Sure, T. Van Hook. I assisted the Wilcox School District in preparing their application.
Are you an employee of the school district or a volunteer?
I am a, an employee of the City of Wilcox.
Okay, thank you. So on this application, I see it's 22 acres of turf, replacing it with low-water-use landscaping. So is this not replacing ball fields? This is replacing non-functional turf that's at the schools?
It's a combination. They have some gathering areas at the high school and the middle school, some public areas at the elementary school, all of which will be converted. The school passed a bond issuance in the recent election, and this additional funding will allow them, as they're redoing the drainage and other things, to put in the low-water landscaping and remove the turf from those areas.
So there's no installation of artificial turf?
No, there is not. There is a reduction similar to the City of Wilcoxes, where ball fields are redesigned to limit the amount of turf, but there is no installation of artificial, of any artificial products.
Okay. Does the school district operate their own wells, or do they receive water from the school, or from the town, sorry?
The school district does operate its own well system.
Okay. I see another hand raised. Okay, thank you. Are there additional questions for the applicant? Other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. We will move to discussion and concerns by committee members. Next question, let's see, co-benefits. Anybody want to do co-benefits for this?
This is Sam, conserving groundwater. It's in Cochise County, particularly in the Wilcox basin, and it's the best management practice.
Great, thank you. Are there any public comments on this application?
We have no requests for comment, Madam Chair.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, last chance for thoughts or comments on this application. Erin, go ahead.
I appreciate it's going to a school district, and they haven't received any funding from WIFA last round. New applicant.
Thank you. All right, we will move to the Sholo Unified School District.
All right, thank you. So we have Sholo Unified School District, who has requested just over $2.4 million to convert their grass fields, including the soccer field, softball field, and practice fields to artificial turf. We did add a note on this one, that the WIFA staff estimate for the acre-foot savings is assuming that activity would be completed by June of 2026. Based on the applicant's timeline to spend the grant funds and match funds, it does appear unlikely that the activity would be completed by June of 2026. However, we, we did consider reducing the grant amount requested with a staff recommendation. However, it was unclear within the application if that, that would be an accurate assumption on our end. So I'm happy to take any questions on that. Otherwise, a fairly straightforward project, just the concern of it being completed by the deadline to spend these funds.
Great, is the applicant present?
Madam Chair, I don't see anyone with the applicant's name online. If you are here on behalf of the Sholo Unified School District, if you could please use the raise hand feature, we'll enable your mic.
Okay, I think the primary question is how they will complete this in the specified time amount. So again, if we can get them to speak to that via email, that would be great. Any additional discussion or concerns from committee members on this application? Any additional discussion or concerns from committee members on this application? Okay. I think generally, you know, this is a fairly high cost. I am very concerned about the timeline. This is a lot of work to get done in a very short timeframe. Also knowing that summer is coming, and then kids are in school, and that can be complicated to make all those things work out. Any other comments on this application from committee members? Co-benefits, it is a new applicant, I believe. It is conserving groundwater in a rural county. Other considerations for this application?
My theme today seems to be a new applicant.
Okay. I know Rhett's not doing counties today.
You keep saying rural county, and I'm like, that counts.
It's generic. I'll get it wrong one of these times, like, that one's not rural. All right. All right, do we have any public comment on this one?
We have no requests, Madam Chair.
I'm checking all the boxes. I don't want to miss one. Also, I feel like a broken record. All right, any last thoughts on this one? Okay, we are going to move to Fort Thomas Unified School District.
All right, Agenda Item five point twelve. We have Fort Thomas Unified School District requesting three million dollars to convert their baseball field and softball field to artificial turf. Additionally, landscaping at the high school campus, turf areas will be converted to artificial turf as well. This was a previously awarded grantee. They have completed their, their previous program and spent their funds entirely. And then otherwise, I think a, that was all my notes for you.
You took my question.
Finally getting ahead of you a little.
All right, does anyone have questions for the applicant? Okay, discussion or concerns related to this application? We'll say it is not a new applicant, it's one we have supported in the past. It's excellent to hear that they have completed that work. Other questions? I do think the water savings appeared very high for what they were. So I just want to highlight that. Other co-benefits on this project? Go ahead, Rhett.
Graham County.
Whoa, good job.
Graham County and upper, and it's the Upper Hila, which there's a lot of strains in the Upper Hila.
Yes, indeed. Okay, other thoughts on this one? Do we have any public comments on this application?
Madam Chair, we do have one request for a public comment from Shane Hawkins, the superintendent of the Fort Thomas Unified School District.
All right, Shane, you get, I hate to be the keeper of it, but three minutes, and Chelsea's going to be the keeper of time.
Good morning, thank you. Just wanted to introduce myself as superintendent at Fort Thomas. And as mentioned, we've had a previous grant that is now completed. Couple things to this grant, we recognize the, the magnitude of all these quality programs that are presented to you today. And we do have a program, and we think it's extremely important to our kids. But if you come down to the, the nitty-gritty and, and you're starting to have to make tough decisions, we looked at our grant application, and we think that we can continue with a program and reduce that program by cutting out one of our ball fields to make it continue to fit into a program. Couple other things, our school district, because of comments that were made today, we've made an emphasis of not planting grass anymore in our district. That's important to note, we have a construction project for classrooms at our elementary school, and we're not putting grass in those areas anymore, partly because of the process we've went through over the last couple of years when it comes to water savings. And then also, the amount of usage was commented on, it's high usage, and it's extremely high usage for watering turf in our area. We are on the Hila River, but we're in such an area where the salt content in the ground and in the groundwater in both, both of those processes is extremely huge, and all the experts continue to tell us to solve the problem, you just add more water, which really kind of seems to combat the problem, but that's the solution, and so that's what we continue to do. And so, we do appreciate the fact that you're, you're considering rural communities in rural Arizona. It's really tough on rural locations to come up with projects like this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Do we have any last comments on this application? And I do want to say, I wish that we could hear from every applicant, but we simply will never get out of here if we did that. So thank you for your comments. Thank you for coming up today. We will move on to Chandler Unified School District.
All right, so we have the last of the turf removal applications for your review today. So Agenda Item five point thirteen for Chandler Unified School District. They are requesting three million dollars to reimburse costs associated with replacement of five grass fields with synthetic turf at the high schools in their district. So these are fields that have already been replaced. It is, they included a significant match amount, so the total cost would be over fourteen million dollars. The one note that staff added on for this is that while the pre-award costs are within the eligible timeframe allowed for this grant opportunity, we do note that there may be difficulties in ensuring that federal procurement requirements are met that are required for these ARPA funds. Other than that, that was my only note.
So to clarify, all of this work has been completed?
That is our, that is our understanding.
Okay, is the applicant here today?
Yes.
You could just make sure that's on and introduce yourself.
Hi, good morning, I'm Tom Dunn, Executive Director for Chandler Unified for Kappa Projects and Operations.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Gandolph, and I would be the grant manager on this one.
Can you confirm that these projects have all been completed and the money has all been spent?
That's correct.
Did you follow federal accounting guidelines?
Like Davis Bacon, things like that? Or, I mean, we filed all, Arizona State Procurement, we had an RFQ to select the contractor. I don't know the specifics of the federal guidelines, but we certainly have followed all of the Arizona State acquired procurement guidelines.
So these are ARPA guidelines? So it is federal procurement?
Okay.
Processes? I don't know that we want to comment on that.
I can't comment on that either. If I had more information, I could do some research with our business office, make sure...
I think if you could do some research with your business office and confirm that this is ARPA funding, it is federal funding?
Okay.
And you would have had to follow all of the federal funding guidelines? Perhaps shoot an email to staff and let them know by Friday? And then we can bring that into the record on Friday at our meeting then. Does that seem workable? Okay. Great. Any additional questions for the applicant? How was this funded currently? So you've already done the work, so presumably you had money.
Correct.
So utilizing bonds. Okay, thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
I did put in for a public comment, I don't know if you want me to wait?
Yep. Okay, so ahead of that, any discuss, I have an order, Chelsea. I have to go down the list. I don't want to break the rules, Joe won't give me pens.
I know, Joe's in person today, so we gotta...
Yeah, follow the rules. All right, are there any discussions or concerns with this application? Okay. Would any committee member like to identify co-benefits? Okay, we will go to public comments.
And we do have one, Madam Chair.
Okay. Go ahead.
Appreciate the time. We didn't include this in our application, but if we were awarded the grant funds, we would convert a sixth high school. So we're committed to using these monies to convert our final high school to turf. I would encourage, to Ms. Young's point, the education of turf safety and heat is important. I learned a lot about turf in this process and G-MAX testing and player safety, so I would encourage the, the board to seek out that education, because I think that is important. I also think that our volume of water conserved maybe was not calculated correctly, thirty-four acre-feet per year times twenty-five years. I think it's closer to eight hundred and fifty. I could be wrong, acre-feet is not my expertise, but I just wanted to, I think we are saving more. Also, our cost per acre foot, we wanted to be fully transparent with our, what we paid for this project. We did do a lot of reworking of our athletic track and field facilities that weren't related to the turf. You know, if you stripped all of that out, our total cost would be closer to ten million dollars for just turf removal, which would then decrease our cost per acre foot conserved, but we wanted to be fully transparent with our, with our total cost. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Okay, and if you'd like, I can just clarify on the acre-foot range.
Yes, please do.
So just to clarify, the WIFA staff's estimated acre-foot range is based on the total grant amount plus the minimum match amount, so the WIFA attributed portion of the overall project. Because they had a very large total project cost, we're really only taking credit for twenty-six percent of the overall water savings. So in total, it would be six hundred and eighty to one, over one thousand acre-feet saved, but the WIFA attributed portion would be smaller because of that.
Thank you.
And then we'll also just add one more note for the, the applicant when, in regards to meeting the federal procurement requirements. So it is two CFR two hundred is the, the main kind of federal resource to focus on. We also do have a resource on our website for, it's the post-award webinar that we presented for everyone that was awarded grants under the previous, that kind of outlines all of the requirements, so suggests that you look at that.
Thank you.
And then, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'm gonna interrupt really quickly just for a programming update, because we are changing to a new category here of grant applications. On the agenda, we listed a tentative break from noon to one-thirty. The committee has agreed to move some things around, so we actually don't lose quorum at that time, which I thought we would. So we are gonna shorten our lunch break from twelve o'clock to twelve-thirty. So if you are a, an applicant who's here wanting to, you know, hear the discussion on your application, just know we are gonna come, break at twelve, just like we thought, come back as close to twelve-thirty as we possibly can. Committee members will provide lunch for you all, so that way you don't have to go somewhere and scurry to do that. But we are not gonna come back at one-thirty, we're gonna come back at twelve-thirty. So we're gonna just keep cranking through until noon, and then we'll go forward from there.
Great, thank you.
For everybody?
Sounds like a plan. Okay, just to wrap this one up, so I can put my last checkmark, any final comments from the committee on this? I think my primary concern is this funding has already been secured and spent, I recognize. Being able to provide this funding would allow them to do more work. And also being concerned about the past application of federal procurement guidelines can be complicated. It is a school, which is a great opportunity to educate students, and it sounds like it would really complete the package there with the school district. So other thoughts on this application from committee members or co-benefits you want to identify? Okay. We are gonna check that box then. We are going to move on to agricultural system grants. I do hope that our applicants are here, because we are luckily ahead of schedule, which is great. We will go ahead and start with those ag system grants. Lindsey, you wanna take it away?
Thank you. So first up for the agricultural system upgrades, we have Hila Valley Irrigation District with Agenda Item five point fourteen. They have a grant amount requested of two hundred thousand with a match of fifty thousand with a total cost of two hundred and fifty. You'll see, we, staff corrected that amount. The total cost was somewhat unclear, the applicant indicated two hundred thousand in response to question six. However, and the budget table indicated two hundred thousand grant and fifty thousand match, therefore we updated that so that the two hundred and fifty thousand total cost. However, the budget table also had a few issues with it, with the supplies and contractual budget items not calculating correctly, and indirect cost included as match. Therefore, based on the budget table, the total cost may be as high as two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, and staff just noted that we are assuming two hundred thousand is the correct grant amount. And then just to add one last note, we did have a difficult time in verifying the assumptions used in computing the applicant's claimed water savings for this one.
Okay, is this applicant here?
Madam Chair, I do not see anyone under the applicant's representative name, and I don't see any hands raised, so I believe the answer is no.
Okay. Let's see. Well, I had a long list of questions. All right, does any discussion or comments on this? My questions really, say them out loud, were, I wanted to confirm the actual budget numbers. I really would like to understand what farmers are paying per acre on this district, and what savings will be realized by the farm as a result of this? And then what is the likely transferability within the district of this type of work? This is land that presumably would be individual farms rather than, you know, district-specific lands. So wanting to make sure the feasibility is there with the private landowners being committed. Other comments on this application? Go ahead, Rhett.
I'm also curious just about being able, this, it's really interesting, but I'm curious about being able to track the water savings if they're clean.
Erin, did I see your hand up?
You did, yeah, I appreciate your questions. I had similar questions, and will they be able to answer at our next meeting?
So we do not have them agendized for the next meeting, Erin, but we can do, I think, what we've asked with a couple other applicants. Make sure they watch this, flag this recording for all applicants, and say, you know, if you weren't there, make sure you're watching, and make sure you've watched your agenda item. And if there were specific questions, you're free to email staff to provide to the committee.
Okay, I missed that, thank you.
Great. That's a good solution. Any additional discussion or concerns on this?
I was just wondering if staff could speak to the water conservations, if you had issues with the calculations. Is the estimate that you've provided, that's what WIFA staff believes the savings would be?
That is based on their sixty thousand acre-foot annual estimated savings. So we didn't correct the water savings on this, we're just noting that it was difficult to verify the assumptions that they made to get to sixty thousand acre-feet annually.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I do think this is an interesting process. I will say, other programs where on-farm efficiency has been addressed, it can be a very cost-effective way to reduce water use. Measuring that savings is difficult. It also can be a struggle getting people to commit to this. And it also, you know, you need to know how much are they actually wasting to know how much they can actually save. So without a lot of that very specific information, it's hard to assess this. I would assume somewhere in the Hila Valley, folks are paying a lot for water, and they are being pretty conservative with their allocations, because they do have specific allocations, as opposed to some of the less managed districts where it's very much open to however much you want to apply to the field. All right, any co-benefits anyone wants to identify? I would say innovative approach is good. It's a low-cost way to save water as opposed to large infrastructure.
It's in Graham County, and it's in the Upper Hila, which is a pretty strained area of the river.
Excellent. All right, any public comments on this one?
We have no requests, Madam Chair.
Excellent, any last thoughts on this one? Okay, we are going to move to Roosevelt Irrigation District.
All right, so we have Roosevelt Irrigation District with Agenda Item five point fifteen. They requested two hundred thousand dollars to enhance their existing conservation through automation program by adding SCADA upgrades and flow control devices to improve delivery accuracy, reduce water waste, and support real-time water management. We did fund previously several applications, but specific to this one. And this program, we funded just over one point nine million, so adding on the two hundred thousand for this program, staff did not have any concerns it would be going over the three million program max. And I think that's all my notes, and I can pull up the notes on how much they've spent. Give me one second.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for the applicant? I do not have questions for the applicant.
And I'll just note again for the folks online, if you are here to represent... And I'll just note again for the folks online, if you are here to represent the Roosevelt Irrigation District, just use the raise hand feature. I don't see the name of the project representative, but if you're here on their behalf, just let us know.
Great, and I will say, this agenda is tentative, and people should have known how efficient we were going to be. But perhaps if people do show up after lunch, we can come back to a couple of these. Is that reasonable? Go ahead, Lindsay.
So, so we did award four grants to Roosevelt previously. They are spending on all of those. Then, we have 19%, 70%, 77%, and 24%. I'll also just add that the amounts that I am saying are the amounts that they have requested in reimbursements from the, us for all of the applicants. They could have additional funds that they are preparing to submit for reimbursement, so.
Excellent, well, that, that is great progress. So exciting. All right, committee members have thoughts, discussion, concerns on this application? I think the only comment I would have on this is we have awarded a significant amount of money over four applications already to this applicant, which is not to say a reflection on this particular work, but more on the overall priority of trying to spread the impacts that we do have out. Co-benefits, anybody want to do co-benefits? Okay, go ahead, Rhett.
It's groundwater conservation in a groundwater stressed area, and it's, you know, it is a pretty, pretty good savings, pretty good bang for your buck.
Very cost-effective. Okay. Do we have any public comments on this application?
We have no requests, Madam Chair.
Excellent, any last thoughts on this application? Okay, we will move to our next Roosevelt Irrigation District comment.
All right, Agenda Item 5.16 for the Roosevelt Irrigation District's Concrete Canal Rehabilitation and Modernization Extension Program. They did request 2.25 million for this, but staff is recommending a reduced amount of just over 810,000 to keep them below the $3 million program limit. The activities would fund repairs and improvements across the district's canal system, including one mile of main canal reconstruction, patching, lining, and piping, with the goal to be to reduce seepage loss, improve efficiency, and extend system life, and building on the prior successful conservation-funded program. Let's see, it's the, the same applicant as previous, so they are making progress on all four grants. Otherwise, I don't think I have any other notes for you on this one.
Great, and has the applicant arrived? Okay. I think my question here, and I think this is, is one of those things where it's difficult to decide what is system maintenance versus what is new efficiency. Repairing and patching lining, to me, feels a lot like system maintenance as opposed to something where we're converting from lining to piping or dirt to lining. So, I do, would like to hear about that. I also would like the applicant to confirm if they would move forward with the staff reduced amount, and what in their application they would prioritize with that, and how that may impact their cost per acre foot numbers. Are there other thoughts or concerns related to this application? Okay. Co-benefits, I think the same as the previous one. And any public comment on this one?
No, Madam Chair.
Excellent, any last thoughts on this one?
I'll just throw something out there. If this and the previous one were awarded, I think that they would have received more funding than all other applicants. By a significant amount. They're up to $6 million so far, so between these two, they'd be getting close to 10 million in total. A lot of water savings, we can't argue that, but it is a, it's going to work.
Yes, thank you for that comment, Blake. Okay, we will move on. Oh, go ahead, Aaron.
Oh, I just, I had a question if there's active land subsidence in any of these areas of the canals that drive. Would I also agree with you, Madam Chair, seems to be more maintenance-focused.
I am unaware of if there's land subsidence. I don't think that was specifically mentioned in the application.
All right, I'll just ask, and maybe I'll have an opportunity to learn in the future. Thanks.
Okay. All right, we will move to Maricopa Stanfield Irrigation and Drainage Districts.
All right, Agenda Item 5.17. We have Maricopa Stanfield Irrigation and Drainage District requesting just over $1 million to install 12 Water Ease EMF solar-powered devices on Dakota Farms. They state by incorporating these devices and strategies within the commercial farming operations, they hope to address the water qualities of salinity, which would help to reduce the overall water needed, required for flushing out the salts in the soil. The applicant was awarded a previous grant, which was unrelated to this application. They do appear to be at about 90% spent on that grant proposal. And then, otherwise, we did know that we couldn't verify the estimated water savings for this one. However, they did include some written testimonies from Yuma area farmers who are utilizing this technology and have stated that there's substantial on-farm savings.
Great, thank you, and is the applicant available? Wonderful, will you come up and introduce yourself? Okay, if you could just do your name into that, make sure it's on.
There you go.
Great, and your name?
Tal Farhi. I'm the founder and CEO of Water Ease.
Okay, great, thank you. So, on this application, and perhaps you are not aware of these answers, but what do farmers pay per acre foot or per acre on this, this system?
I believe Brian Yurgis is on, and he can answer that. He is the general manager of the Maricopa Stanfield District. Or Rob, who is just driving here, he's a few minutes away. We were just going to try to have him, you just skip, but you guys are moving so fast. So, he's here. Rob, do you want to answer what is the cost?
Is he, is he close?
Very.
Is he, he's like parking out there?
Yeah, like five minutes.
Okay, let's go ahead and skip this, and we'll come back to you in a few minutes.
Thank you so much, Rob. Thank you so much.
There's an, oh, there's a parking lot for oversized cars. So, he knows.
You know he's rolling in something like that.
Yeah, oversized parking to the left, don't go in the parking garage. Let's go ahead and move to Pioneer Irrigation Company.
All right. So, Agenda Item 5.18, the Pioneer Irrigation Company, who is partnering with Apache NRCD for Phase III Reservoir Gates Installation Filler Ditch Big and Ammonity Pipelines Application. They are requesting 1.4 million dollars. Staff is recommending a reduction of that to remove a portion of the cost. So, they are planning to do big, big and ammonity ditches, pipeline replacements, which would replace earthen canals with approximately 900 feet of pipeline. They plan to do the filler ditch pipeline and ditch rehabilitation, which would replace earthen canals with pipeline and convert earthen canals to concrete. And then, they plan to do reservoir, reservoir gate rehabilitation to replace three of their gates. We are recommending to reduce, to remove the costs associated with item one in the list, in the summary list there.
And why?
And, and so, they were awarded $3 million previously for the Big and Ammonity Ditch Pipeline Replacement Program, essentially. So, staff's view was those costs would not be eligible to be included within this, but the other two items would be unique to create, to have it, as those are the new program cost and eligible. And they did, their current grant for the, the pipeline, they are looking to have requested about 5% of the, the cost for reimbursement.
Excellent, thank you. Questions for Lindsay? I stayed up late last night and committed these all to memory. And so, thank you. Is this applicant here? Shoot, I have a feeling a lot of applicants think they're coming at 1:30.
No, I don't see anyone online, Madam Chair. Oh, wait, we have Carly Cox with her hand up. Carly, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to talk.
Can you go ahead? How are you doing today?
Great, go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Carly Cox with George Cairo Engineering. I am a grants coordinator in our office. And it was my understanding that Mr. Cairo was trying to be there in person on behalf of Pioneer Irrigation Company. I'm assuming he is not.
You might want to text him.
I did shoot him a text. I can absolutely do my best to address any questions or comments that you guys may have for us, though.
Great, thank you. Just really quick, Lindsay, how far along are they in spending their first application, did you say?
5%.
They're only requesting the WIFA. Okay.
They are, we're still in design phase with our first grant. And once we have kind of gone through and we're at more of a 60 to 90% design, we'll be able to go ahead and really move forward with ma- making big item purchases and long lead items to be able to start moving those funds along.
Are you anticipating, I mean, this is an irrigation ditch, so they're going to need water all summer. Are you going to have enough time for implementation in the off-season? Because I also think you might have snow.
That is.
What's your construction period?
That is true. They are looking to construct during the dryup in the fall.
Okay.
Oh, I was just going to say, however, I'm sure we can coordinate individual dryups for certain areas.
Thank you. Blake, go ahead.
I was going to say, based on your application, it showed that you guys are going to be doing procurement this fall. But that was the intention, and it's also stated that you had long lead times. Do you want to speak to that? Because obviously, all this money must be expended, and the project must be completed by June of '26. So, if there is a deviation from that, and procurement's going to still be ongoing, kind of makes me question the viability of, are we going to be able to actually get this done?
That I can appreciate. I know, really, when it comes to the long lead items, it would be getting gates. We have a preference within our irrigation districts to utilize the Rubicons, because their SCADA and interconnectivity is preferential. However, if we have to go with a different option such as Fresno, for, you know, meeting timeline purposes, I'm sure the district would be open to that.
What's the lead time on a Rubicon?
The lead time on a Rubicon? Mr. Cairo, are you in the car on your way there? Give me one second, you guys, excuse me.
Yeah, I'm on my way there, because it, I, I thought it was earlier, but it's after lunch.
No, there, we're already on, on our grants for Pioneer.
What?
Can you log on online? Can I send you the link? And what is our, what is our predicted lead time on a Rubicon gate, by the way?
The ones that we ordered are 12 weeks.
12 weeks is our lead time for a Rubicon gate, Mr. Anderson.
Well, if you guys were to get the funding awarded in June, let's say, procurement takes a month to get out to bid, unless you guys have already completed the procurement just as part of the other project, you're looking at realistically not getting that until September or October.
That would be accurate, yes, worst-case scenario, November. And then, we would probably need to coordinate individual dryups for certain installation areas.
Great, thank you, Carly.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem.
You did a great job of fielding two phone calls at once.
Oh, thanks, I try.
All right, do we have additional questions for the applicant? Okay, we will move on to discussion. I think my primary concern related to this is the complexity of two fairly large projects in a very limited amount of time. I do appreciate rural irrigation companies trying to work through these very big issues. These are complicated projects with a lot going on, and there's very few funding sources for them. So, I am sympathetic to that. Let's see, other committee members wish to comment or identify concerns? Co-benefits? Go ahead, Rhett.
So, Little Colorado River Basin, we also only have two applications from Apache County for this cycle. So, and it's, you know, it is pretty good bang for the buck in terms of savings per dollar spent.
All right. We will, okay, any public comment on this one?
We have no requests, Madam Chair.
All right, any last thoughts on this from committee members? Okay. We are going to keep moving to Yuma County.
I will say, Madam Chair, if you wanted to go out of order, I do see that we have representatives, at least from the vendor, for Hila Valley. So, if we wanted, I don't see anyone from Yuma County online. So, if we wanted to move to Hila Valley, because I do believe we have someone online to speak to that, we could do that and come back to the others if we wanted to.
I'm going to get my papers all out of order, but I think that's fine. This one, we're done with, so we're going to move Yuma County.
I recommend going to 5.21.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Hila Valley. Okay, Lindsay, we're going to do Hila Valley Irrigation Districts.
All right. So, the district has requested just under $3 million to purchase end drip irrigation equipment for approximately 550 acres of farmland. It would commence infrastructure conversions from flood irrigation to the microirrigation, and it, they would plan to install approximately 1.22 miles of canal lining with this proposal. WIFA staff did correct the water savings for this, just based on their, their esti- their explanation of how they calculated it. And otherwise noted that the assumptions and the water savings appear to be in line with published results we were able to identify. And I think that's my only notes for you.
Excellent, thank you, and I'm glad you flagged this. I do have questions. So, if we could have the applicant introduce themselves, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Gilan here, I'm the EVP of the Endrip Inc.
Do we have anyone from Hila Valley Irrigation District?
Unfortunately, Sam could not attend, but I, I can answer on his behalf first of all.
Okay. So, I will just start. Have the farms where this will be installed already been selected?
Yes.
Are you using NRCS funding or U of A money, and has that been secured already for these farms?
Yes, we are using a U of A money.
And that's U of A money that's already secured?
Yes.
Okay. And so, this would be supplementing that funding source. What is the cost for the piping project versus the end drip?
Okay, so it's, first of all, it's not a piping, it's a canal, a concrete lining. The concrete lining is 889,000, round about there. And the micro, microirrigation is 2,046,000.
Okay. For these farms that were selected for this, why end drip as opposed to a different product that may meet the farmers' needs differently?
First of all, we had two, three years of already proven success on ground, and the condition in the fields are favoring end drip. If we had to convert them to anything else, if it's a pivot or conventional drip, we have to provide them with booster pumps, which means they had to add energy costs, and infrastructure costs that would be much higher. So, the converted acres would have been actually much lower. So, it is the most cost-effective and proven for that area.
What's your cost per acre on end drip?
On that job? Yeah, I don't have it exactly, because it's built from different project. And every, every project got a different cost per acre, but it's actually tailor-made designs for each farm. Depends on the conditions, the location of the pump.
Like roughly ballpark? Like roughly ballpark?
Uh, let's say about one thousand eight hundred per acre. But it's, it's a complete, it's a complete tumsak. They, they really vary um in numbers.
Excellent. Uh, do other committee members have questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Erin.
Yeah, um, when or how long has it been since the canals have been lined? And so it's re-lining them, um, they're already concrete-lined?
No, the, the current section is a, is an earth canal.
Oh, okay.
We, or the district are intending to, to do a s- a cement liner, what's actually a, a fiber reinforced uh cement lining.
Is it in an area that is subject to um land subsidence? Or do you, how long do you expect the product to last?
So we, we put ten years uh on our calculation, but I think we all know that it's actually much longer than, than ten years, especially with the, with the fiber reinforced. So they are expecting, I would say from my personal experience, a minimum of fifteen years. But in our calculation, we worked on ten years.
Thank you.
Hey. Uh, Tim, go ahead.
Uh. Yeah, I have a question. This is not the uh end drip that has to be uh pulled out every year and reinstalled. This is uh something that, that uh a product of yours that's permanent?
So the, the end drip uh system is built from two parts. You got the infrastructure, which is a multi-season, um, up to ten years. And then the lateral, the laterals are still seasonal lateral, they will need to be removed uh and reinstalled every season, at least I can, at least until we can uh work out the method for a no till or a minimum till, but it's all in, in the calculation. Uh, the annual replacement of the laterals are all in.
Is that uh built into this grant amount that's requested?
Absolutely.
For, for how many years? Ten?
It is built in for, to check my calculation, two, infrastructure is fifteen, a replacement of laterals, two years. And that's uh included in the water saving in there.
Okay. Uh, do you know, you may not be able to speak to this, uh how many different farmers uh are included in that five hundred and fifty acres?
Top of my head, there are three, but there might be the fourth one, the, I, I'm not too sure. Right, sorry, I know, I know the, the name of the, the actual fields, but there's three or four of them.
Okay.
Three, three, three definite, and then I'm sure, or I think it's uh the fourth one's also into that application. I just don't remember which one is from which grant, but there's uh a lo- a large number of growers that working with us.
And those uh five hundred and fifty acres, they were uh picked by convenience for the uh higher chance of success on those.
So we, we picked, three of them are current customers that approached us to increase the acreage, and we had them uh waiting, and one, the, the number four is a new grower, and they obviously targeting the area that's got the worst results or uh the most difficult for them to irrigate.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, we will move on to discussion and identification of concerns.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um. Rhett, was that a hand? Oh, okay. I think generally there is already funding in place for um a lot of the on-farm piece. Um, I'm more comfortable with the lining portion of this project. Um. I guess I hesitate when we are providing funding for a specific irrigation supplier. And um I, I, I do have concerns around that, and that's kind of an ongoing concern with these applications when we're looking at federal procurement guidelines. And we are saying, do irrigation efficiency with this particular supplier, that, that's an ongoing concern I have. Um, otherwise, I think it's a great cost-per-acre-foot savings. Um, it is certainly in an area where we need to be doing this kind of work. Um, and I do know that end drip is a product that has had some great successes uh out there. So it's not something specific to the product, um, so I just want to highlight that. Um, other thoughts or comments from committee members? Okay, co-benefits? Okay. Uh, let's see, any public comments on this one?
We have none, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Any last thoughts from committee members?
Have co-benefits already been named?
No, go ahead.
O- okay, um, it's a, I, seems like a good, very good return on investment and a large volume of water saved in a stressed area, the Gila, uh, well, groundwater and the Gila River water savings, um. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Okay, we are going to.
Recommend we go to three, four, five point one seven, because the applicant is here both in person online, and then we can break after that.
Oh, can we do these, go back to these guys?
That's them, yep.
Okay, good, we're on the same page.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna do you guys really quick, and then we are going to go back. Um, so Lindsay, do you want to do the official? Tell us who they are again?
Absolutely, I'll just give a brief reminder. Get myself situated here. So five point one seven, it's Maricopa Stanfield Irrigation and Drainage District, requesting just over one million to install the twelve Water Ease solar panel devices. Um, we have the applicant available now, and so. For any questions that you may have for them.
Great, and I don't know where that sheet went, so we're gonna look on here.
I have just one, one correction.
Okay, thank you.
Not solar panel, we will uh make that correction in the evaluation form.
Okay, uh, so if you could quickly both introduce yourselves again for the record, that'd be great.
Good afternoon, my name is Rob Nor. I'm a farmer located in Maricopa, Arizona, in Pinal County, Arizona, Maricopa Stanfield Irrigation Drainage District. I live and reside in Pinal County in, in the town of Maricopa.
Excellent.
Once again, I am Tal Farhi, and I'm the CEO and founder of Water Ease.
Excellent, thank you. Um, so just really quickly, um, I think for the, the farmer, is, how many acres will this be impacting?
This, since two thousand twenty-two when DCP was triggered, uh, central Arizona farmers uh that have been blessed with the surface supply of CAP water for all these years, uh, our area wasn't as prepared as we should have been to have groundwater supplies ready. Meaning that this, our farm, I manage two thousand nine hundred and fifty acres. Uh, unfortunately, this year, we're targeting just a little over nine hundred acres in total that we'll have water for on the twenty-nine hundred and fifty acres. The site that we are proposing for this will have approximately two hundred and sixty acres of corn on it, and that's out of a farm that is nine hundred acres. So roughly a third of our acres are, will ha- will have wet water to it in two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, so this is over a million dollars, and it's going in on two hundred and sixty acres? Is that correct?
The site is, is a nine hundred acre farm, of which we only have water for two hundred and sixty acres in two thousand twenty-five.
So will these go in to cover more than the two hundred and sixty acres for this year?
Yes.
So this will cover future years where you may have water?
That's correct.
Okay. Did you, just from the federal procurement question here, did you consider other types of moisture sensing devices?
Yes, however, this project specifically looks at uh how we can make the limited water we have go further, spread further, and to be able to get more acres in production, and also have more productive crops with the technology and tools and resources that we're asking for will help us leach out salts and be able to have higher yields on the acres that we do have.
Okay.
The idea is, last year, I used six and a half acre feet per acre on my crops to grow a crop. The previous four years, my average was four and a half acre feet. Due to the conversion from great quality CAP water to our groundwater that has higher insalinity, uh, we had to apply additional water in order to grow a similar crop. Uh, and that is why I'm here, is that we're struggling the way it is economically as farmers, and I went out searching for how can we help? What can we do to take the water we have and make it more, cover more acres because of this limited uh water supply we have? And this is one of the top ideas that I ran across and started researching and said, this is not only meaningful for me, but for all of central Arizona farmers that are facing the same cut in reduction of water, and how we can be more um productive and not only, not only be productive and fight the cha- economic challenges that central Arizona farmers face, uh, but be able to grow more nutritious and more uh productive uh fruits, vegetables, commodity crops that we have there.
And so there's a match commitment here, and it was probably in the materials, but can you speak to, is that cash match from the farm, or where is that match coming from?
What we can bring to the table is our har- our, our on-farm hard work and labor. So this is a, in an essence, a cash match. Our goal is to provide our, the labor and the farm equipment that we have to bring that in as a, uh, a value compensation for that. So we're gonna pay the employees to do as much of the work we can ourselves.
And you think that will add up to the minimum two hundred and seventy-three thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, are there other questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Rhett.
I'm just curious about the potential for Inlu water contracts with GSFs at the extent to which you anticipate changes in your supply of being able to go back to CAP water if you do have GSF contracts coming in the future, or if you're anticipating this being a long-term groundwater supply? Or if you're looking at potential mixes if you're able to get into Inlu contracts?
All right, Brian, I've enabled your mic so you can uh speak to Professor Larson's question, but just go ahead and introduce yourself as well.
Good afternoon, Brian Yerges, General Manager for Maricopa Stanfield Irrigation and Drainage District. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, if I recall, what the question was, it was asking about GSF water and that availability, and if, if the district is seeking additional GSF water. Um, I can tell you that, yes, the district would like to secure additional GSF water. We're willing uh and able to talk to any party that is interested in storing water uh in our area. Uh, what I would say is, right now, our, our total GSF water that's available to the district uh in calendar year twenty twenty-five is less than three thousand acre feet spread across our district.
How many acres are in the district?
Are uh roughly sixty-six thousand acres.
Thank you. Uh, additional questions for the applicant? Erin, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, I'm reading the application that it, it is a pilot project.
Right.
And I'm sorry if I'm just missing it, but was the, was the uh long-term estimate over the life of the project, assuming that the pilot moves forward for the long term?
Yeah, so Maricopa Stanfield Irrigation and Drainage District considers it a pilot project because if the technology wer- works and uh Rob on Dakota Farms can, can show the impact and um the outcome of, of the project, obviously, it benefits this location, but uh it's something that we would like to explore, this technology and other locations in the district with our farmers.
Okay.
So that's why, that's why MSIDD considers it a pilot project, because obviously, it doesn't serve everybody in the district. It is a, a small area that it serves, but we would like to demonstrate um basically the success of, of the project with our other growers.
Thank you.
Tim, did I see you go off mute?
Yes, you did.
Go ahead.
Uh. How long has Water Ease uh been in business?
Five years, almost?
Okay. Uh, so this is a, what's the limit output of the system you plan on installing? How many acres will it cover?
This is Rob Nor, uh, the, at full build-out, the farm that it's located on is nine hundred acres. The twelve units will serve the, the nine hundred acres. Uh, we're, and with water we have available for Maricopa Stanfield, we have two hundred and sixty are targeted for this uh two thousand twenty-five. But I think, I think it's important to note that as a central Arizona farmer, there's two hundred and fifty thousand acres approximately in central Arizona, and the most of the farmers I know are, have two things in common. One, we're short on water, and a lot of our groundwater is high in salinity. And this project, my goal is, we're all in the same boat, and we're all struggling to look for, what are we gonna do? As soil electrical conductivity rises year after year of putting the, the well water we have on, we're facing reduced productivity. So this is, the goal here is that this has a chance to benefit all of us in central Arizona, and really, all, all over where they face similar type situations.
Uh, yeah, so a million dollars, nine hundred acres, uh.
It's one thousand two hundred and fourteen, Tim.
Thank you, thank you. Uh. That's almost uh like buying the ground over again. That's just a comment, not a question. Uh, and why was this particular farm picked? Is your soil extremely saline, or is it uh solely a water quality issue?
Uh, I, this is Rob Nor again.
Yes.
We uh farm a dinyer fine sandy loam, sandy loam soil uh with CAP water that has a sodium ion content of two hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty parts per million uh that came through our canal. Our soils right now are, have been ranging with an EC of point five-six, and that's uh, my opinion, very little uh for this area. Could grow any type of vegetable crop, fruit crop, commodity crop. One year of groundwater last year. I have pictures on my, and I could show you that, that after a year of using this well water, I have an EC in one of the fields of three point two on this farm. So due to the well, quality of the water and the amount of water, we went from point five-six to three point two. And right now, I planted that field, I just left the farm on the way here, and the corn is stunted, and it's only an inch tall, where the fields that were point five-six EC right next to it, adjacent contiguous on this fine, dinyer fine sandy loam, are almost four inches tall in only a three-week period of time. So the availability of water and the water quality is critical for our productivity. In other words, I got a bad problem, and I'm looking for a way to, looking for a solution.
Can I, can I just add one, one additional comment? Um, in, yeah, in addition, you know, the district uh obviously has a board, board of directors, but we also operate through a committee structure, and that includes a well committee. And uh really, it, it should be titled Well Committee. And really, it should be titled Well Committee and Infrastructure Committee. And so we've been working on district infrastructure projects that are recommended through that committee. But we, a number of years ago, with the DCP funding that was made available at that time and, and other projects, you know, we use that committee structure as a way to engage with our growers and our farmers on infrastructure projects. And so there are other projects that we are looking at with other farmers in our district, as well as district infrastructure projects. But this is one of those projects that came through with Rob Nor and came through our well committee kind of, and get outreach effort. And it was recommended by the well committee, and then it went to our board of directors. So just to give a little bit more background of how this farm was selected, we do have a active well, well and infrastructure committee that works with our customers and looks at a variety of infrastructure projects in the district.
Thank you. We are going to move on to committee discussion and concerns. Would anybody like to identify specific concerns? I do think the cost per acre, depending on how you calculate it, could be high. I do want to just reiterate again, the idea that we have a specific vendor identified in the contracting can be complicated with the federal funding guidelines and how that might pan out. Overall, I really sympathize with this challenge of how we're going to grow crops in places where we have historically grown crops. And I think how we protect our, our food systems is incredibly important. It is not, however, the goal of this committee. So kind of trying to balance those things is, is a challenge. So I really appreciate you both being here, really appreciate learning more about your farming operations. So thank you, I'm glad we were able to, to hear from you, and we didn't have to have you in a box over there. So with that, are there co-benefits that committee members would like to call out? Go ahead, Rhett.
This is the hardest-hit area of the state when it comes to Colorado River shortages. They need help.
I concur. Any public comments on this one?
No requests, Madam Chair.
Excellent, thank you. And then, any last thoughts on this one? Okay, thank you, guys. We are going to break for lunch. Do we think we can get that done by 12:45?
That's my goal, we'll get that done by 12:45. I also do want to note, just for the record and online, we have sent an email to applicants to update them on the schedule, confirm the break times, that we will be back between 12:30 and 12:45. We only had a couple of applications in this category that didn't have the chance to speak and that you had specific questions for. If we see those applicants online, we can absolutely, at your discretion, Madam Chair, bring those applications back up to have that discussion and give them that opportunity. So, but we will plan to start with Agenda Item 5.19, the Yuma County Grant Application at 12:45.
Okay, thank you. It is now 12:49 PM, and I would like to resume this meeting of the Witha Water Conservation Grant Committee. I will call, roll Blake Anderson.
Here.
Excellent. Andrea Gerlach? Not here. Tim Grandy?
Here.
Thank you, Tim. Rhett Larson?
Here.
Here.
Colin?
Here.
Erin?
Here.
Thank you. Sam Draper?
Here.
Excellent, and Kim Shonik, I am here. So we have seven of us. And just to note for folks, I will be stepping out for about an hour at 2:10. And I will pass the baton over to Rhett at that time. So we will dive right back in at Yuma County. Lindsay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have Yuma County with Agenda Item 5.19. They requested just over 1.5 million for their return flow credit maximization project. The Yuma County Waters Conservation Activity proposes to install three new wells and related equipment to deliver pumped water into the Yuma County Water Users Association Drainage System in order to receive return flow credits for water right holders. They state this will have a positive effect on agriculture production, as well as providing relief in some areas of soil settling and subgrade disturbances that negatively impact homes, outbuildings, and roadways. We did correct the water savings on this because they, they included the estimated water from one well site instead of three, so we did correct that for them. And then we also added a few notes that it was very difficult to verify the applicant's stated benefits of reducing high groundwater levels. And while we don't question the feasibility of operating the pumping and drainage system, since they provided some examples, we did want some additional details in regards to how the proposed activity would take into account the treaty with Mexico, Minute 242, and other information related to the drop contingency plan. So we added those notes to the feasibility section of this, and I believe that was all my notes.
I think, any questions from the committee for Lindsay? All right, is the applicant present?
I don't see anyone with the applicant's name online, but if you are here from Yuma County or the Yuma County Water Users Association, please let me know by raising your hand on Zoom, and we'll be able to unmute you and ask these questions. I don't see anyone, Madam Chair.
Okay, I will say that the Yuma County previously received $2.3 million fund. How far along are they in spending that?
So Yuma County received two grants previously. One is 100% reimbursed, and the other is about 25%.
Okay, my primary questions for this applicant are, where will the savings actually accrue to? Who will financially benefit from the return flow credits? And why is the county leading this as opposed to the water district? So maybe we'll get some answers to those.
I will just note that I believe part of the reason that county is leading this is just with the complication of eligible entities. And so making sure that an eligible entity was the applicant and that the right pairing of eligible entities was together.
Okay, thank you. Do other committee members have comments on this application?
I had the same questions that you did, Kim. It seems like water accounting more than anything here. I don't know if we're actually conserving anything or just moving water around. And so I kind of struggle with this one personally. But like I said, the applicant's not here, so it would be nice to be able to ask them some of those questions.
Colin?
I just wanted to echo what's written in the feasibility portion of this. How does this project fit in with Minute 242, 2019 DCP? And I'm curious about how it fits in with the post-2026 operation guidelines that we haven't enacted yet, that will, at some point, hopefully, be enacted. But I, I'm curious how that's going to work with this project.
Great, thank you. Erin, I saw you off mute, did you have a comment?
Just echoing what's already been stated from Blake and yourself on this with questions.
Great. So with that, would any committee member like to identify co-benefits? Okay. Are there any public comments related to this application?
We have received no requests, Madam Chair.
Excellent, then we will continue. Any last thoughts on this one? Okay, we will continue on to Yuma County Water Users Association.
We have Agenda Item 5.20 for the Yuma County Water Users Association, who is partnering with Yuma County. And they are proposing to install three new gates with SCADA controls, install a new diversion structure. They plan to modify the original diversion structure and then install new cast-in-place replacement diversion structure. They are requesting just over $2 million. And the water savings would be from the Colorado River. Yep, and those are all my notes.
Okay, and I did not identify any past grants, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And I assume we don't have the applicant yet? Okay, no worries. Generally...
We actually do have George Cairo online, who I believe can answer questions.
Oh, okay. Generally, I think this was a pretty straightforward infrastructure project. Let me see. Just quickly, for the applicant, George, can you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yes, am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is George Cairo. I'm the engineer of record for the Yuma County Water Users Association, and I could answer any questions.
Is this system lined already or piped, or how, what are the conveyance systems?
So there are some sections that are concrete lined. This section of canal is not. So this is at the, this is at the heading into the main laterals. So it kind of controls the flow into the system. And that's how it really is going to help save water, because you don't, you can regulate flows into the system better.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there additional questions for the applicant? Okay, a discussion of concerns related to this application? Co-benefits, would anyone like to identify co-benefits? Go ahead, Rhett.
Colorado River Water Conservation, it's a pretty good bang for the buck.
And the new applicant. Okay, are there, any public comment on this one?
We have no requests, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, any last thoughts on this application by committee members? Tim Grandy?
Yeah, this question is for George. Are these diversion structures going to be at a lower elevation? Or are they just concrete instead of dirt?
So what, if you, if you can still hear me?
Yes.
The, the existing structure is an antiquated structure that is, is really basically falling apart. Its, its service life has, has been met. And what we need to do is replace it with a new concrete structure that has better hydraulics and then obviously state-of-the-art controls.
Okay, will it be lower to pick up the, the lower flows in Colorado River? Okay.
Yeah, so it, so it will be lowered, and that is a problem with the sediment, that sort of stuff, that, yeah, it'll, it'll be engineered to operate better hydraulically.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tim. All right, any other comments, questions, concerns, co-benefits on this project? Okay, we are going to move on to San Carlos Irrigation and Drainage District.
We have Agenda Item 5.22 for the San Carlos Irrigation and Drainage District. They are requesting $3 million to modernize approximately 1.5 miles of the Florence Canal by replacing online sections with concrete lining and updating inline structures. The project is part of SCID's Long-Term Phase System Improvement Plan to reduce seepage, enhance operational efficiencies, and conserve water across its 50,000 acres in central Arizona. The irrigation district did receive two grant awards previously for, I believe, a little under, and I had it up a second ago, a little under 1 million, so 900,000, a little over 900,000. We currently have no requests for reimbursement received on either of those. And I believe that's all my notes for you.
Okay, and is this applicant on?
I don't see anybody with the applicant representative's name, but I do see George and Carly, again, are on to answer questions. So I will go ahead and allow them to do that.
Okay, thank you. On this one, so reimbursement requests have not been submitted for the previous projects. Are those on track for completion?
Yes, we have, we have two of them. One is the Little Mountain Spill. And that one, they have ordered all their precast concrete structures. We had to competitively bid and do all that, and also do the same thing with the contractors. So you should see those come in here pretty soon. And she's also on the diversion gate at the Ashers Hayden Diversion Dam. We finalized the design, and so she's going to order the radial gate, so you'll see a substantial invoice request on that one here pretty soon.
So you feel like you're on track to be able to complete those existing projects and take on additional work within the system?
Yes, for two reasons. One, we've been working diligently on the other two. This third one is part of an ongoing contract. We've already pre-qualified contractors. We've already got the system designed, and so really, it's just ready to go. So my answer would be yes.
Okay, thank you. Do others have questions for the applicant? Tim?
Yeah, George, I apologize, this isn't really your field, but would you know how many acres are being actively irrigated in '25 slash '26?
I, I believe they're irrigating about anywhere from 50 to 60% of the lands. There has been a reduction of lands from the recent expansion of solar, but also with the limited supplies in the, in the lake, we're kind of not able to really have all the acreage served.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, we will move to discussions and concerns related to this application. Does any committee member wish to start? Overall, it seems like a pretty straightforward application. You know, lining sections of ditch, they have specific project plans. They do seem to have a plan in place, so that seems good. Co-benefits, anybody want to do co-benefits? I think it definitely helps an under-resourced community. Does save Colorado River water and is fairly cost-effective in terms of cost per acre foot conserved based on these estimates. Let's see, any public comments on this one?
No requests, Madam Chair.
Any additional comments, thoughts from the committee? Okay, thank you. We will move to the next one, Santan Irrigation District. Lindsay?
Thank you, so we have Agenda Item 5.23 for the Santan Irrigation District, who is requesting $3 million to modernize the system by sealing leaking structures, upgrading seven wells, replacing nearly 8,000 feet of failing pipeline, and installing SCADA automation for improved flow control. They believe these upgrades will conserve water, reduce groundwater pumping, and improve irrigation efficiency. This is a first-time applicant for the Conservation Grant Program, and we did do one slight correction to their water savings, just based on their explanation of the water savings calculation. So they, they stated within their explanation, they believed it was 542 acre feet per year, which is what staff corrected it to. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Kim.
Thank you. Is this applicant on?
I don't see anybody with the applicant representative's name, but I do see George, once again, here to answer questions we might have.
Great. Let's see, George, do we need him to introduce himself for each one?
Yes, please.
Okay, George, can you go ahead and introduce yourself again?
Yes, this is George Cairo. I'm the engineer of record for Santan Irrigation District.
On this particular one, it talks about sealing leaking structures. What does that mean, and how long will those repairs last?
So they have standbox irrigation structures that are, you know, 10 or 12 feet in the air, so they're, they're under some hydraulic load, and they're, they're cracking and leaking. So the ceiling would be a coating that's going to be applied internally, and it would have a 50 to a 75-year life. So it'll, it'll last the duration of the remaining life of that structure, the remaining concrete external to the ceiling.
And what is the upgrades to the wells?
So the upgrades to the wells include measurement and remote control, so that they could be so that they could be turned on and off uh and managed correctly.
And that's the same as the SCADA or in addition to the SCADA?
So that's in addition to the SCADA. So those components would be SCADA-compatible, SCADA-ready, and then we would tie them, we would tie them to SCADA Connect so that they could be monitored and managed from either the Zenharo vehicle or the, the headquarters.
And then how is the pipeline failing?
So the pipeline is failing because it was an old on-farm irrigation type installation with pip, pipe. And as this, as the city has expanded, they've, they've now um um actively loaded that pipe, and so you have a bunch of leaks and that sort of thing. So that's, that's, it's a failing pipe that needs to be replaced because of that.
Okay. How much of this is system maintenance versus new water conservation mechanisms?
So I think um I think you could say maybe the ceiling of the structures could be some maintenance where they could have gone in there and maybe patched them up over time and that sort of thing. Uh, the other impacts are due to urbanization. You know, the stuff on the pipeline and those sorts of things. It's just the rapid growth around the small district that it's, that it's been impacted by, and so they now need to, they now need to modernize to kind of uh be able to control and operate their system efficiently.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, does anybody else have questions for the applicant?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Erin.
Um, how much water uh passes, do you manage every, every day, MGD or e- every month? Just to, for me to help me scale the savings, and maybe there's a percent savings, but I, I'm not seeing it in the application.
George, if you're responding, we can't hear you.
Okay, um. Yeah, so they have uh, they have their seven wells, uh, and then they have, they have their other system wells that, that um are in the district, so they're probably operating um 15 wells and then they take surface water, so if you're assuming that those wells are anywhere, let's just say 2 CFS, right? So you're at 30 CFS daily operation when they're, when they're running the system. And then if they have water that they get from a CAP allotment or something like that, then that's on top of that.
You put CFS in gallons per minute by chance, or maybe Blake can help me? Someone else? And if not, I'll just figure it out.
Yeah, so it, it's like 448 gallons per minute times 30, so it's like 13,500 roughly.
Thank you.
GPM running, yeah. Yep. Lot of water.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Of course.
Additional questions for the applicant from the committee? Okay, uh, let's see, discussion of concerns related to this application. Uh, I will say that one of the challenges with all of these irrigation projects is determining what is good maintenance versus um what is new features. You know, so I, I kind of struggled with that a little bit in here. Otherwise, I think it's a pretty straightforward application with uh fairly cost-effective water savings. Uh, Tim, go ahead.
I just, this is a question, I guess, for the uh, with the staff. If the uh conserved water was based on 3,000 acres or 900? I mean, it, it would still be cheap water, uh relative to city stuff, but uh.
And Ken, if I can ask, do you mean acres or acre-feet?
Uh, well, the system is 3,026 acres. Uh, but they're only forming 900 of it. So what was the uh conserved water based on?
I see. So we did, we based our estimate on what the applicant stated for their annual estimated water savings. We did correct this one because they had put in response to the, the question um 135,503 acre-feet savings, and question eight, however, in their explanation stated that the estimated savings are 542 acre-feet per year or roughly 21% of their total usage. And it's based on engineering analysis, field assessment, flow records, and accounting for losses from leaking pipes, outdated valves. Um, but we did not, uh, it does not seem they have based it on their acres of um, uh, farmlands.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Uh, co-benefits, anyone would like to identify? I think we hit some of them. Okay, uh, any public comments on this application?
No requests, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Last call for thoughts or questions, comments on this application. Okay, we will move on to Paloma Irrigation District.
Alright, so this should be the last of the agricultural um applications. So we have 5.24 for Paloma Irrigation and Drainage District. They are requesting three million dollars to modernize lateral A by installing automated gates and SCADA technology to improve water delivery efficiency and reduce losses. They um project that it will support 4,400 acres in their district and advance their long-term modernization goals. Um, we did previously award two grants to the Paloma um irrigation district for uh just about $5 million. Um, they're currently about halfway through one of them, and the other one has 8% and requested reimbursements with WIFA. Um, and that's all my notes for you.
Alright, uh, is this applicant on?
Got George again.
Okay, George, uh, go ahead and introduce yourself again.
Hello, this is George Cairo. I'm the engineer of record for Paloma Irrigation and Drainage District.
Okay, thank you. Um, again, I felt like it's a pretty straightforward project. Uh, my primary question, uh, do you see a challenge in completing this project as well as the two others in less than a year? This is quite a bit of funding to get out the door.
Yeah, so we uh, on, on the one, we are closing out uh the one that was uh cost-shared with federal funding. The second, the second one, we have just submitted design and um we're getting everything ready, so this winter, all that construction will be completed. So we will have that money spent shortly after this winter, uh, when we commission everything. Um, the other monies, I can tell you, have been well-spent and the project is uh amazing and active. And so this is the next phase. This is the next phase.
So when will design be completed on this?
So design would be competed, completed on this within 45 days. If, if awarded. Then we could.
Would you be able to implement this project as well this winter?
That, that is the plan. We have, we have pre-select, well, we advertise and we have four uh contractors that we have pre-qualified that we're utilizing for these projects. And so we would have two contractors available to be able to take on this work because the others are working on the other two phases.
Okay, thank you. Uh, additional questions for the applicant from the committee? Okay, uh, we will move to discussions and concerns related to this application. Uh, anyone want to start? Go ahead, Rep.
This is, I mean, it's, it's in a critical groundwater area like Hila Bend. It's helping to serve uh communities in need, including Tohono O'odham. It's really good bang for the buck. But it's also another $3 million on top of $5 million. It's already gone out. We're trying to spread opportunities and uh it's, there's a lot of work left to be done on the ones that are already financed.
Great, thank you. I concur with those statements. Any additional co-benefits or comments folks would like to make about this application? Tim, go ahead.
Uh, well, uh, not supporting this uh either, either way, but uh the district is uh 30, 32,000 acres. Uh, George knows more than I do. So it does seem uh like, like this is uh i- in essence, like we've covered them, but it's the size of a three or four or five irrigation, smaller irrigations put together. Uh, that's a comment. And then one question for George is uh what size and in what kind of shape is a lateral A?
So this, this, this particular lateral, like the others, are, you know, they were all dilapidated. It's an old system. It was built, it was built by farmers many, many years ago um that organized and built that district. So it, it, it is in need of repair. I would say that um if the committee, you know, finds it difficult to fully fund, any funding that would be able to come their way, Paloma would be appreciative of it. I would also like to add that um, you know, Paloma, their district manager and their board is very progressive, and they are, they want to really work to be the best stewards of water and be an example in Arizona, and, and they're really working hard to do that. And with your help, they've come a long ways, so I just thought I'd put that out there.
Thank you. Tim, any additional questions or comments?
Uh. No, thank you.
Thank you for that context, Tim. I think that's really helpful in considering these. Um, alright, let's see, uh, let's see, I gotta look at my list. We did co-benefits, we did discussion and concerns, public comments, Joseph.
No requests, Madam Chair.
Okay, last call for thoughts on this application from the committee. Okay, thank you very much. We are going to move on to recharge and reuse grants. Um, in this section, uh, the last one is Yavapai Patchi Nation. If we get there uh before I have to break, we're going to move that to when I do break, so uh go ahead, Lindsay.
Alright, thank you. So agenda item 5.25 is for the Sky Island Alliance. They are requesting just over $68,000 to uh install 150 loose rock erosion control structures in the Santa Catalina Mountains north of Tucson. They are partnering with the Mount Lemon uh Domestic Water Improvement District for this application. Um, with a staff did correct the water savings for this um to include the total number of structures um that, so they are requesting funds to install an additional 150, but have um pre-award costs they plan to use for match in which they um installed 250 of these already previously. Um, so for a total of 400 uh total structures, um, and with a staff corrected the water savings based on that. Um. And then I'll just add, yeah, we couldn't identify any benchmarks to compare this to. However, the applicant did cite several sources for their assumptions and staff finds the proposal feasible. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Lindsay? Alright, uh, do committee members have questions for the applicant? Okay, um, I oh, Tim, go ahead. Uh, do we have, well, let's see, do we have the applicant?
Uh, I was gonna say, if you are the applicant for Sky Island Alliance or their representative, if you could use the raise hand feature on Zoom, that would be great. Thanks, Emily. I see you there. Your mic is enabled.
Okay, thank you. Emily, will you just introduce yourself quickly?
Hello, everyone. I'm Emily Burns. I'm the program director with Sky Island Alliance.
Great, and then uh, Tim, if you want to start with your question for the applicant?
Is this a forest service property?
We are, we have been working for several years on forest service property. Through this specific proposal, we are requesting to work on, within the boundary of Summer Haven, mostly on private land. However, there may be some um, some sections that are addressed that are Coronado National Forest.
Okay, so uh, oh, and they'll monitor, would be no problem then. You would, you would be, have in essence, control or enhancement to uh work on these?
Yeah, we would be working with private landowners that would like to have this type of erosion control structure work and revegetation work done. And we already have permission from Coronado National Forest to work on the federal side.
Oh, cool. Alright, thank you.
And Erin? Erin, you're on mute.
Sorry, I thought I clicked it. Um, question, uh, would you have funds any other way? Um, and the water storage amount listed, is that the effective recharge rate?
Uh, the first part of the question, we have a, a little bit of funding to work only on the federal land, so not really within Summer Haven. And um, but that currently, that funding is paused uh while all the agreements are under review. So we don't know if we'll have that to use. We're hoping that yes, we will during the same performance period. And then for the second part of your question, this is the water recharge amount.
Uh, one other question, uh, you guys probably have a maintenance plan in place, but I didn't get to your application to read that.
Uh, we've, with the 250 structures that have already been built on Mount Lemon on the federal property, we do go and monitor those every year. We're looking for signs, um, first of all, that the structure is intact. We're looking at soil development and accumulation behind the structures and looking at revegetation.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Great. Any additional questions from committee members for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Emily. Uh, I will open it for discussion or concerns related to this application. I do think that this is a great example of natural distributed storage in a fairly concentrated area. One of the things that has been hard to understand about these projects is if you're doing one or two or three in an area, the benefits are not the same as if you're doing a larger number. Um, so I like that this is in a focused area. I like that it's benefiting um a specific population. Um, I also like that it's on private lands with residents who will hopefully be engaged to maintain those structures and see those benefits over the long term. Um. Alright, uh, Erin, did you have an additional comment?
I do have an additional question, I think, on the structures and the recharge rate and um, the recharge rate, how is that determined? And I, I'm guessing you're subtracting out evaporation or vapor transpiration and um, or have you measured recharge rates with the current structures? I'm a little bit more curious about the estimate.
Uh, yeah, that's a, that's a great question, and this is something um that we are frankly estimating based on what we found in the literature, where water storage measured on other structures. So basically, we're relying on published examples of this kind of rock work in an app, in a similar system. Um, it isn't something that we've been able to monitor directly and calculate directly on Mount Lemon. Um, we're, we're open to figuring out how to do that, um, but really, this estimate is just based on our educated estimate from the literature.
Thank you.
Great. Alright, any additional discussion or concerns on this application? Would anyone like to identify additional co-benefits? Erin?
New applicant.
New applicant?
And impacting, you know, a small community, rural community, kind of dependent on their own watershed, on a small watershed for water supply.
Localized water. Okay, thank you. Rhett?
It's pretty good bang for the buck and not a whole lot of money. So that's kind of nice.
Yeah. I think the opportunity to learn in the state is really important. I know ADWR has been working on this question around recharge and how do we quantify these things? So it's a great example where we can learn quite a lot.
I wanted to add one more thing, a benefit. I think preventing erosion into the Big Horn Fire burn scar is a big benefit in this project.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you. Any public comments on this one?
None requested, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will say, last call for comments and thoughts on this application? Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to Town of Clarkdale.
So we have the Agenda Item 5.26 for the Town of Clarkdale. They're requesting $165,000. This activity would design approximately 5,100 feet of six-inch forest main reclaimed pipe from the reclaimed fill station to the Selma-Mogini Park, continuing on to the Clarkdale Park. We, let's see, we do have one current grant with Clarkdale for their meter project, and they're currently looking to have requested about 8% in reimbursement for that program. And then, look over my notes. And then we weren't able to verify the water savings assumption. But using the benchmarks for the turf removal kind of conversion, it would be in line with that. So this would be converting, you know, portable water irrigation to the reclaimed water irrigation, somewhat in line with what the turf removal benchmarks are indicating.
Great, thank you. And do we have the applicant on today?
We do. We have DK Green with us.
Okay, great, thank you.
With Lou Anderson, as well, the Director of Public Works.
Okay, great, thank you. Just to clarify, this is for design only, or will it include any implementation?
Strictly designed from our reclaimed tank up to our Selma-Mogini Park. And we got a preliminary quote from our engineers on that $135,000, $165,000.
Thank you. Are there additional questions for the applicant from the committee?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So the funding is for the design of the system? And then are there funds already set aside to construct the line?
Thank you, Erin. No, there is not. We have been looking at other opportunities. However, we thought design would be the first step and set us up for a shovel-ready project to identify what we would need to do and if it's feasible. We're currently working on our design of our Bitter Creek Bridge, which crosses the Bitter Creek. And we're able to put a sleeve in on that construction project, and we're at about 30% design there. So as far as timing, this, we thought that just the design is what our ask was for. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Yeah. What is a six-inch forest main reclaimed pipe?
So I'm sorry, can you repeat that question? I apologize.
What, what is your pipe? Six-inch forest main reclaimed pipe? What's that mean?
It's just a, it would be a reclaimed line going from our reclaimed storage tank to the parks in the Clarkdale.
And what, what is it? PVC?
We, we think that that's the plan. Our design is that it would be a PVC pipe. But again, that's all going to come with the design from the engineers.
So you have, you have access to this pipe?
Yes, we would be able to get the pipe, no problem. We currently do have a storage tank with effluent, and we're irrigating about 100 acres of land that we, that's, that's the use now. And we'd really like to see it at better use. We do sell some of it to construction projects. But with our parks, it would save us seven acre feet a year. So that's why we wanted to get the design done to see, see what it would take. And then we could have an estimated cost of the project.
Okay, thank you.
The sourcing the pipe isn't the issue because all of the work would actually be completed if the project went through post-award. That would be associated with this funding. Yeah.
All right.
And just for context for folks, this is outside of an AMA. The municipalities in the Verde Valley are typically evaporating their effluent as the lowest-cost management opportunity. So it is an interesting question here when we're thinking about effluent and how we're using it. So I do want to highlight that currently the effluent is being evaporated. And that's, that's a consistent challenge across the Verde Valley for folks that are unaware. It also cannot be discharged into the river for water quality concerns. So there's a lot of complicating things to managing effluent in the area. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, comments or concerns related to this application? Okay, I think generally this is kind of a complicated project because it is just the design phase. It is uncertain about funding for implementation. However, to the applicant's point, if they don't get past the design phase, it's hard to get funding for the implementation phase. It is irrigation of public space. So it is potentially an increase in turf in that area, but it is functional public space that would be accessed. And it does allow for a productive use of that effluent in a community with water limitations. Other concerns or co-benefits folks would like to identify? Okay, do we have any public comments? Oh, was that Tim?
No, this is DK Green with Clarkdale. I just one other thing I wanted to add in our application, if it wasn't pointed out already, that that line, it would also be made available for customer connections if need be and could be extended in the future to provide additional water savings throughout the town, not, not just for those two parks, but that was the primary beginnings of that design.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments related to this application?
None requested, Madam Chair.
Right, then I will say, last call for thoughts on this application?
Madam Chair, just the savings of groundwater in a groundwater stressed area of the state?
Yes, thank you. Okay. We will move on to Tri-City Regional Sanitary District.
All right. Agenda Item 5.27 for the Tri-City Regional Sanitary District. They are requesting $2 million for their Phase Two of their program to construct approximately 5,100 linear feet of gravity sewers with manholes, main lifts, five smaller lift stations, and approximately 2,600 linear feet of forest mains, along with associated equipment needed for their new water reclamation facility. This is a water reclamation facility being put in in order to allow homeowners in the area to convert from the septic and the cesspool systems currently being used to be added on to this new sewer system. WIFA staff noted that the, we were unable to really verify the estimated water savings since there's attributed specifically to the new water reclamation facility and collection system, increasing recharge of aquifer and reuse of effluent as good water management. And the program does seem that it'll have the ability to save groundwater. Additionally, we noted that we have previously assessed the proposed activity under the Conservation Grant Program, as well as our Clean Water State Revolving Fund and Water Supply Development Revolving Fund, and have those notes for you in our feasibility section.
Okay, I will note that Andrea Gerlick has joined us. Can you just confirm, Andrea, that you can hear?
Yep, I'm here and I could hear everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining. Lindsay, to clarify, you said they had applied for that funding. Have they, I know they did not receive the Conservation Grant Fund. Did they receive any of the other funding?
So they, they did receive one Conservation Grant Award for $3 million for Phase One of their program, and they were denied for Phase Two and Phase Three from the Conservation Committee and the Board. And then they've also received funds through the Clean Water SRF and now through the water supply. Losing track of where our water supply funds are at this. But yes, they have been recommended, they have been funded. They have been funded. They have not just been recommended. They have been, yes, yes.
Excellent, thank you. Is the applicant here?
If you are online to represent Tri-City, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand. I don't see any names I recognize from the applicants. So, Madam Chair, I'm going to say no.
Okay, great. I think my primary question is if they have customers that have committed to utilizing this line and what cost there is to new, new service connections? And if they actually have commitments from those to move away from septic and cesspool systems? Because conceptually, you would think people would want to do that, but often people do not want to pay a sewer fee when they can use their existing system. I also recognize they have received a significant amount of funding from WIFA, Conservation Grant Fund, as well as other funding sources in the past. Other comments or thoughts on this application from committee members? Co-benefits, anyone would like to identify? It does have groundwater savings. Okay, do we have any public comment on this one?
None requested, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will do last call to committee members for comments.
Madam Chair, I'll just add, I, I like this project a lot. Like, it's so important to do all this work. I just struggle to find like the tangible water savings buried in here. But the long-term, the long-term project is awesome. And I guess I just wanted to add that.
Madam Chair, I would just add that as well. I, I think the overall goal is a good one. The water savings, of course, wasn't much. And so then it ended up being very expensive per acre foot. But my big question was what you posed at the very beginning, Madam Chair, which is, do we have any kind of commitment? Like, how many, how many homes or households would this, how many properties would it then service? And it feels like that's a missing piece here. You don't want to, like, we will build it and they will come kind of thing. It'd be nice to know that folks want this.
Yeah, I, I think that's a limiting factor. And so perhaps we will hear from the applicant between now and Friday. And we can, we can address those issues. All right. Other thoughts before we move on? Okay, we will move on to Silver Creek Flood Control District, Millet Swale Recharge Redevelopment.
All right. Agenda Item 5.28 is for the Silver Creek Flood Control District. They're requesting $2,180,000 to redevelop the Millet Swale Reservoir as a groundwater recharge basin through phase berm constructions. It builds on earlier work that they completed in 2023 and includes reinforcing the existing basin and adding a second recharge basin within the reservoir footprint. We did note that we could not verify the estimated savings due to the lack of water use reporting required for the district. However, the activity does appear to be feasible and will support the aquifer health. And additionally, I do believe they are a first-time applicant.
Yes, I think so. All right. Does anyone have questions for the applicant? I did not have questions. This was a great application. Well put together. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I was a little slow there. Without there being, you know, metering of water or it was, maybe they're not required to report. I'm just curious if they are measuring like water within their systems and might have tracking of water available if requested.
Okay. Let's see, do we have the applicant?
If you are here to represent the Silver Creek, we do. Zach Barlow is there. Zach, I've enabled your mic. You'll just have to unmute yourself, and then you're welcome to speak.
Okay, and Zach, if you could just go ahead and introduce yourself first?
Yes, Zach Barlow, with basically the district engineer for the Silver Creek Flood Control District.
Great. And did you hear Erin's question?
Yes, I heard most of it, just clarifying on whether they have any data tracking on the stormwater that goes through there.
Yes.
They do have some. It's been kind of recently implemented after the 2021 dam breach. And it's mostly just getting an understanding of the total amount of water that is going through there. And we, we can work on getting that information put together and provided to the committee, if that'd be helpful. But ultimately, it will, ultimately, what, it'll depend on what it looks like as far as what the final design of this berm does, how big of a basin we're able to capture behind that, as far as what the estimated water savings and recharge through this project will ultimately be. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Any additional questions for the applicant? I would encourage you, Zach. The Cochise County Recharge Network has an extensive monitoring program for their recharge projects that are similar to this. So that might be a place to look at as you're developing this, to get the monitoring installed as you're developing the project. And again, you know, as we, as a state, are looking at how can we improve recharge, I think this is again, a great example of a recharge project that is relatively low cost and has potential for significant benefits in an area where we have groundwater-dependent ecosystems, as well as communities. So I think the monitoring component would be great to see in the future.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. We'll move to committee discussion or concerns? Co-benefits? Rhett?
Navajo County.
Go Navajo County. All right. And I just, I'll reiterate, I just, it's a great example for the state to learn from related to recharge. So a good opportunity. And a great revitalization of space. We'll say we're on quite a few projects that involve small ponds and reservoirs. And getting people to accept that that's not going to be an open water feature anymore is difficult. So I applaud the moving on to a thing that actually benefits the community. All right. Any additional, any public comment on this one?
No requests, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Any additional thoughts, comments, concerns on this project? Okay, we are going to move then to Apache Junction Water District.
All right. Agenda Item 5.29 for Apache Junction Water District. They are requesting $3 million for their aquifer storage and recovery well application. This would propose to install a new well, purchase and install electrical, chemical, and pumping equipment for the well, and connect the well to the distribution system. We did note in the feasibility section that the applicant's water savings of 1,000 acre feet per year seems high compared to how much water is used by the district. We were unable to determine whether the proposed activity would result in a net increase of water stored under the ground or whether it would result in the same amount of water being stored but in new locations. And we also noted the WIFA board did previously deny a request for the same activity for $3 million under a previous round. Further, we did revise the WIFA staff estimate to have the lower value at zero and making the high value for cost per acre foot unknown.
Great. Is the applicant for this project available?
We do have Mike Loggins available from-
We do have Mike Loggins available from the Apache Junction Water District, and Mike, your microphone has been enabled, so you just have to unmute yourself.
And if you could go ahead and introduce yourself, that would be great.
Yes, hello, my name's Mike Loggins. I'm the Apache Junction Water District Director, Engineer out here, and we're proposing this project for, you know, aquifer storage and recovery to answer, I guess, some of the questions you guys got some concerns about.
Hold on, we're gonna ask specific questions?
Sure.
Thank you. In this particular project, where does the water come from? Like, what is the source of water that you'll be recharging?
So we have two different sources currently. Uh, so right now, uh, we are not using our entire CAP allocation, so we'd be recharging that water into the grounds, to save groundwater for the future, and as our CAP is needed for development, we'd be using reused water to recharge at that same location, so we can recharge those and recover that water. So it's a dual-purpose well rather than just one, one source.
Okay, is there anything substantially different about this application than the application you submitted last year?
Uh, no.
Okay. Are there additional questions for the applicant from committee members? All right, um, in terms of the water that you would be recharging from your CAP, is there an annual cost of that water to you?
Yes.
Do you pay that whether you recharge it or not?
You, if you don't get it delivered, you do not have to pay for that, but if we get delivered, and currently we are delivering it to groundwater savings facilities, they are not located with, in our area, they're in our active management area, but it's not directly impact our aquifer in this area, and that's what we're trying to do, is put water in the groundwater. We can utilize it later, um, as part of saving that groundwater rather than letting it go to some other properties and recover it later where it's not being, uh, stored.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Do we have additional questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, we will move to discussion, our concerns with this application by the committee?
And before you begin, Madam Chair, I didn't want to know, I failed to note that Sam Draper will be abstaining from discussion and voting on this application.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Erin.
Is the, the award to actually construct the ASR well? And, and is, is the timing feasible to achieve this before June next year?
Mike, can you answer that?
Yeah, so we're currently under design with Clear Creek and Associates for this well, uh, so I'd be going out to bid here in the next month. So typically takes about six months to drill a well, and then once we know what we can do, then we'd have another six months to get everything implemented. Uh, as part of that, a portion that we're paying for is, as you can tell, the larger part of the project's for over $4 million, so we'd get through probably 90% of it and then be finishing the project after that timeframe.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any additional discussion or concerns related to this project? Co-benefits? I do think moving the water recharge to the area where it's actually being pumped is, is a great benefit to this project. I do recognize that. Are there any public comments related to this application?
None that we've received, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, last call for comments or discussion on this application?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time with the cost per acre foot. I'd like to understand, um, is the $55 per acre foot something we're hanging our hat on, or is, is it a different number?
Lindsay, would you like to address that?
So Erin, that would be based on their 1,000 acre feet annually saved. If that's achieved, then over the lifespan, they could save up to 54,000 acre feet overall with a $55 per acre foot estimate as a low estimate. But that's also why we added the question marks for the high estimate because we were, um, having some questions on the water savings for this one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We are gonna keep moving. Okay, last, last thought? Okay, we're gonna move forward.
I will say to you, Madam Chair, we do have one of the, uh, Yuma County Water Users Association. We have a representative from them online if you wanted to go back and answer some of those questions. Since we are gonna skip the N until you can, it's anyway, I don't know if you wanted to do that now, if that made sense.
Let's, let's get through this next section. And then we'll go back to those.
That sounds great.
Yep, thank you. So we are going to hold the N until 2:10, and we are going to go to Global Water, Santa Cruz Water Company.
All right, so we have a request from Global Water, Santa Cruz Water Company for $25,000 to, um, add smart irrigation, to add a smart irrigation controller rebate program, which is aimed to promote the installation or upgrading of smart irrigation controllers in their service area and offer the rebates to their residential customers. WIFA staff did correct the water savings on this one based on the, the estimated saving gallons saved per device that they provided, a 15,000 gallon save per device, which is, um, in line with the WIFA benchmarks, which, um, we typically use the 13,000 gallons, um, benchmark to compare it to. But they did put 122 acre feet based on their, um, explanation in their calculation, though, um, we did correct that to 12 acre feet, um, water savings. And, and, uh, I will mention, so Global Water, um, Santa Cruz Water Company is a first-time applicant. We did do a previous award for Global Water, but under one of their other water companies that they manage.
Thank you. I found this to be a relatively straightforward and cost-effective application, and did not have questions for the applicant. Did any committee member have questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, discussion or concerns related to this application? Go ahead, Rhett.
It's a pretty low cost and solid bang for the buck, but again, I just worry about, you know, rebates depend on so many people taking advantage of them. Are we gonna spend the money and the time? That's my concern.
Yeah. I thought this was a fairly reasonable amount of money to project at, 25. Okay. Additional, and did you want the applicant to comment on that, or are you good?
Nah, who knows?
Okay. Perfect. Uh, any co-benefits that folks would like to identify? I think, you know, bang for the buck, groundwater. Okay. Are there any public comments related to this application?
No requests we've received.
Thank you. All right, last call for comments on this application. Okay, we will move to our next one, which is Queen Creek. Queen Creek really came in strong this time. Good job, guys.
All right, so Agenda Item 5.32, Town of Queen Creek, for $68,000 for their Water Efficient Technology Incentive and Assessment Program. They are hoping to establish a non-residential water efficiency rebate and assessment program for their customers. Eligible participants could receive up to 50% of equipment costs with a maximum rebate of 20,000 per site for installing pre-approved, high-efficiency technologies that reduce water use. Similar to, uh, one of their past applications, WIFA staff did recommend reducing the match amount, which would not impact the grant amount requested, and that is just to exclude the customer contributions, um, which could pose some challenges when, um, submitting for reimbursement costs and proving, uh, the match amount. And those are my notes. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. Again, I found it a pretty straightforward, cost-effective application, and did not have questions for the applicant. Does anyone else have questions for the applicant? Okay, would anyone like to provide comments on this application?
Oh, sorry, I was thinking co-benefits. I got excited about BNP's, BNP's.
BNP's. Okay, um, I do think one concern in particular on this with up to $20,000 per site, you know, there is the potential, by the time all the contracting happens, it's gonna be pretty close deadlines. But otherwise, seems pretty doable. Okay, did we have any public comments on this one?
None received, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, last call for comments or discussion on this application? Okay, we are going to move on to Northwest Fire District. This was a fun one.
All right, Northwest Fire District, for Agenda Item 5.33, they're requesting just over $90,000 to acquire and install 11 pump pod direct recirculation apparatus firefighter training and sustainability units, also known as DRAFTs units. Uh, these units recirculate treated wire released from fire hydrants during, um, fire training scenarios while simultaneously preventing, uh, dry weather runoff. WIFA staff did note, um, that while it's difficult to, um, compare this to established benchmarks, we did note that, uh, Northwest Fire District was awarded a previous grant, which they completed successfully for the same activity, and they have, um, fully drawn those funds at this point. And those are my notes.
Excellent, and I did get the opportunity to see said, uh, feature, and it was a lovely presentation and, uh, opportunity to see water savings in action. So again, I did not have questions for the applicant. Did any committee member have questions for the applicant? We do have the app. Thank you for coming up. We'll see if we get questions.
Andrea, Andrea here, Madam Chair. Is it just that they want to do more of the same? Is that the, is this just kind of further, more of what they did in the last go-around?
I believe so. We'll have, um, our applicant introduce themselves and answer that question.
You'll just need to press the button on the microphone till it turns green, and then speak directly into it.
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Scott Hamblin, Assistant Chief for Northwest Fire District. And to answer your question directly, yes, uh, there is a typo in the summary. It's one more pump pod unit. And 11 would be a significant amount of money more. But, but yes, what, what WIFA staff got to see after we acquired the unit and put it into use was, was the benefit of the water savings, um, and the enhancement of the fidelity of training. And so when you look at Northwest Fire District and consider that we cover over 153 square miles out of 11 fire stations, one unit has done remarkable things for us, uh, and, and centrally located at our training center, gives folks the opportunity to use it. But in our view, if we were to have a total of two units, allowing one to service the south end of the organization and one to service the north end, all of the companies would have access to, to this device to be able to, to do some of that high-fidelity training while maintaining the same water conservation that we can with the one unit.
Excellent, thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, any discussion or concerns from committee members? Co-benefits? I continue to think this is innovative. The savings were very clear and apparent from that demonstration, so, um, thank you very much. Any public comments on this one?
No requests received, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, uh, any last comments or thoughts on this application?
This is Sam. I would just add, I traveled down to Miranda, too, and saw it was a really cool demonstration, and I think it was a really great outreach opportunity to show, like, this is really cool innovative stuff that's happening right here, and even fire departments are getting in on it, and the education component that you all have with your outreach is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, and we always welcome anybody that wants to come see what it's all about.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to watershed management group.
All right, so, and this should be the last of the efficient fixture applications for your review. We have Agenda Item 5.34 for the watershed management group. They are requesting just over $215,000 for a program in partnership with the Pima County Regional Flood Control District. Their program proposes to do outreach, including scheduling site visits to groundwater users in the Winter Haven Water Department, excuse me, I think that's a typo, Water Company Service Area, as well as other private groundwater users in the Sabino, Tancrese, Verde, Upper Relito shallow groundwater area. They also plan to provide up to 500 conservation kits, which, um, will include water-saving devices such as low-flow faucet aerators, low-flow showerheads, toilet tank banks, and, and irrigation leak repair kits. And they plan to have, uh, EcoBlue, a company, assist with conducting 150 to 200 water audits for water savings benefits. I will mention, um, while WIFA staff has no reason to question the feasibility, the water savings assumptions do appear to be out of range of the benchmarks we're able to identify for, uh, efficient fixtures, and similarly to others, the WIFA board did, um, hear this application, it's a similar application from the applicant before, um, under a previous round, and it was tabled for future consideration if funds became available. Um, and then additionally, we did note that the source of the match, um, would be required, have residential water users contributions, which may pose challenges similar to other applications that we noted that for when requesting reimbursement for these grant funds. And those are my notes. Oh, and I'm sorry, one last thing, we did have, um, a previous grant with watershed management group, and they have, um, currently about 10% requested in reimbursement funds.
Thank you. I do not have questions for the applicant. Do any committee members have questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, discussion and comments on this application? Okay, co-benefits?
Best major practice.
Yes. Okay, um, I will say I kind of struggled with the leadership on this, and were the water company's, um, engagement as well as the ability to actually connect with private water users across this geography. You know, this is coming through the flood control district. So that was kind of a struggle for me. Okay.
Madam Chair, to your point, I, I think there is a, uh, letter of support in the application from Winter Haven. I don't know if that applies to what you just shared, um, but it seemed to, so I wanted to call that out.
Yes, thank you. It's a great point. Uh, additional thoughts on this application? Okay. Uh, any public comments on this application?
None received, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are down to our last three, and then some comments. I think if we can just go ahead with, um, these last two, and then, we'll, we'll break from there. Let's go ahead and do the Friends of the Verde.
Absolutely. So we have, uh, application, or Agenda Item 5.35 for the Friends of the Verde River, for their River Friendly Living Grant Expansion. They are partnering with the town of Clarkdale. They requested $250,000, um, which would cover two river-friendly living grant cycles during the activity period. They state they would have application deadlines at October 31st and March 31st. Eligible applicants would apply for funding through them, through the River Friendly Living Program, um, and this would help to ensure that projects align with the best practices for water conservation. They state that homeowners could apply for grants up to $5,000, while businesses and organizations may request up to $10,000. You'll see that we did recommend a staff, uh, reduction for this one, which, uh, gets just a little bit complicated, but it is based on their budget table. So within their budget table, they, um, included a, um, total activity cost included a cost for a treated effluent reuse planning grant, but that they also indicated in their budget justification that it was not intended for grant or match funds, and it was unclear why they included that as part of the total cost. If we take that out of the total cost, the total cost identified was the $263,499. Based on that total cost, the maximum grant amount would be $210,799.98, which is the staff recommendation. So happy to take questions on that, because I know it's slightly confusing. And then I will also just add, we, um, noted that it was difficult for us to verify the water savings, given they're, um, proposing to do multiple types of projects and to give out, um, a savings, given they're proposing to do multiple types of projects and to give out additional grant awards through this program. The assumptions in their claim for the turf removal portion did appear in line with the published benchmarks, but other than that, we could not verify. And I'll turn it back to you, Kim.
And this is within the Clarkdale geography? So this is different than their previous application, which was in Camp Verde? Is that correct?
I want to say yes, but if we want to ask the applicant to confirm.
Okay, we'll get there in a sec. How much of their first one have they spent?
Let me pull that up. I thought I had.
I committed these all to memory last night.
So Friends of the Verde's previous grant is currently at 7% dispersed or requested in dispersments?
And then because this is grant out, does that count as having spent the money? So if they have a March timeline, March, I think you said 31st, and they say, congratulations, landowner, does that count as spent that they can get reimbursed?
I'm going to look at our lawyer over here.
Just tell the general counsel, I think we'd want more information on that before you make any sort of determination right now. A lot of those are going to be case-by-case basis for the procedure and for when they've actually sort of incurred that cost.
Okay, is the applicant on?
I believe so. I do have Isaac unmuted, or his mic is enabled, so you just have to unmute yourself, Isaac, and then you'll be able to address.
Great, thanks. Isaac, can you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Hello, I'm Isaac Dudley, the flows program manager for Friends of the Verde River.
Isaac, in the case particularly looking at the end of March timeline, when do you expect homeowners or businesses would actually have been able to spend that money? And do you think you would be able to complete the work by the June deadline?
Yes, so currently, we typically offer about a six-month work period, but if awarded this grant, we would just include that in the, in the documentation for the grant recipient that their work must be completed by the June deadline.
Are there any additional questions for the applicant? And Isaac, your current budget is about 7% done. Do you anticipate actually being able to complete your previous grant and this one at the same time?
Yes, so as of yesterday, we concluded our March proposal period for the existing WIFA grant and we are preparing our documentation for our April reimbursement request, at which point we'll have roughly 50% of the funds spent out. So we should have no problem continuing that work. The final grant cycle for the existing grant will be next spring, the next March. That'll be specifically for Camp Verde. And there is significant demand from other regions in Yavapai County, specifically Clarkdale, for continuing funds. We were, we only funded about half of the projects that were submitted for last year, so there is significant demand for that, so there should be no problem.
Are you able to just move forward with funding more this cycle so you don't end up with a whole lot next March?
Yes, absolutely. So we are going into the selection committee process right now for the grant proposals that we received by close of business yesterday. And so we anticipate being able to fund all of those and we will have an additional fall grant cycle, at which point we plan to have roughly 75% of the existing funding spent by then.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Okay. Any additional discussion or concerns related to this application? I do worry about the timeline, that's very tight. I also worry about eligibility and reimbursement things, so hopefully that's getting resolved. It is a great program to encourage conservation. It is very similar to rebate programs with kind of a different spin to it, and so it is that question about participation can be a challenge as well. Are there other thoughts committee members would like to add or co-benefits? It is Yavapai County.
Verde River watershed.
Yep. Great, did we receive any public comments on this application?
We did not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, and with that, I am going to turn it over to Rhett, who's going to do our last two, and then you guys can go back to however you want to do that. Here's the agenda for Rhett. And then just quickly before I go, I do think this next project with Borderlands is a great natural distributed storage with, again, a concentrated impact on recharge. And again, a thing that the state really needs to learn how this can benefit us in these rural communities with groundwater-dependent communities and ecosystems, so thank you all. Good luck, Rhett.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So let's, as long as we're right here, let's do 536 Borderlands Restoration Network and then we'll go back to Yavapai Apache.
Absolutely. So 5.36 is for Borderlands Restoration Network, who is partnering with the town of Patagonia. They are requesting just under $250,000 for their conservation activity at Circle Z Ranch, which will install at least 400 erosion-controlled structures and will apply native seed pellets to reduce runoff, increase groundwater recharge, and improve habitat health. Their efforts aim to conserve water and support long-term ecological resiliency in the Sanoyta Creek watershed. Let's see, the estimated water savings appear to be consistent with published research on the effectiveness of erosion-controlled structures and enhancing infiltration and conserving water resources. The applicant reports the program is highly feasible and this would be a first-time applicant for WIFA. And those were my notes.
Great, any questions for staff from committee members? All right, do we have the applicant online?
We do have the applicant online, so Borderlands have enabled your mic, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Great, is there, are there any questions for, for the applicant from committee members? Hearing none. Any concerns or comments from committee members?
Andrea here, I, I just thought it was a great proposal. In terms of the co-benefits, I really, what really struck me was that it was a rural kind of low-income community and then it was really kind of relying on this kind of native restoration. So I just thought it was a lot of bang for not a lot of money, so.
Great. Any other comments, concerns from committee members? Sam?
I would just agree with what Andrea said and Kim as well with the natural distributed recharge happening and just adding to resiliency in the area and habitat for animals and people to enjoy.
Great. Any other comments from committee members?
We do have Tim with his hand up.
Tim?
Yeah, I have one question for staff. Why is the lifespan of the project seven years? How's that determined?
That's a great question, Tim. We did base it on our typical lifespan for other vegetation management activities, although they certainly have the erosion-controlled structures, which will have a longer lifespan than seven years, so that would be a very conservative estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Anything else from committee members? In terms of co-benefits, I'd like to point out, this is the only application we have from Santa Cruz County for this cycle, so. Any other co-benefits people would like to call out? Okay, any public comments?
No requests received.
Great, unless I hear anything else from committee members, we will go back to Yavapai Apache Nation, which is Agenda Item, let's see, 530.
That is correct. So Agenda Item 530, we have Yavapai Apache Nation. They have requested $3 million for their effluent reuse program. They are proposing to build a new wastewater reclamation facility to produce Class A-plus reclaimed water for tribal farm irrigation, and it would also allow local residents to convert from septic to sewer. See here, the water savings would be from the Verde River. And while WIFA staff was unable to verify estimated savings, since it's attributed specifically to the new water reclamation facility, we did note that increasing the recharge of aquifers and reuse of effluent is good water management and that this program would have the ability to, and I just noticed a typo, to save surface water, not groundwater.
Great, any questions from committee members for staff? All right, hearing none. Do we have the applicant online or in the room?
We do, we have Robin Interpreter online representing Yavapai Apache Nation.
Oh, hey, Robin.
Robin, we've enabled your mic, you just got to unmute yourself.
Okay, got it. Hello, this is Robin Interpreter. Yes, we are submitting this application to this program. The nation currently does have a $16 million clean water state revolving fund loan for the construction of the Middle Verde Water Reclamation Facility at Yavapai Apache. It's going to replace some old Indian Health Services lagoons, a lagoon system that's located less than 200 feet from the Verde River. It's been a real concern for the nation. And, you know, as costs have escalated over the past few years, we've got our own cost escalations involved. We are looking for, you know, to close that gap as much as we possibly can. However, the nation is fully committed to constructing this project. It has already purchased $6 million in long-lead equipment for the facility, and so that's on order. Hopefully, will be imported with no tariffs, but we'll see how that goes. We are also jointly funded through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers 595 program. We do have some additional funding requests into that program, however, because there's a continuing resolution in Congress for the budget, it's not looking too positive for us this year. Maybe next year we'll get a little bit more funding, but, but we just have no idea at this point. Our environmental compliance is going to be completed within just a matter of a couple of weeks. We have clearance from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service now, and the decision notice for the Army Corps will be issued shortly. So we're ready to begin construction. We have a construction manager at risk all already on board, and so we're hoping to break ground soon, within the next month or two. And so we're coming to you to request to see if there's any additional funds that you could assist the nation with. This is a very heavy lift for the nation, but it will have so many benefits for the Verde River and the local community as well. The nation works very closely with the town of Camp Verde and as part of the Yavapai Apache Water Rights Settlement. Those two, the nation and the town of Camp Verde are working very closely together to try to address the management of effluent in the communities, just because the topography of Camp Verde area is, is difficult when it comes to managing water and wastewater supplies. And so this plant will also offer an opportunity to do some interconnection for off-reservation users in the town of Camp Verde to try to get some of that septic onto sewer. And all of the, all of the Class A-plus that will be produced from the plant will be used on the nation's farm, which will be offsetting the water that is currently diverted from the OK ditch from the Verde River, so it'll be a one-for-one offset.
Great. Any questions from committee members for the applicant? Robin, how do you see the feasibility of having this done by June of 26?
The entire project will take 18 months from beginning to completion. However, the expenditure of $3 million could be accomplished probably by the end of this year, if not by the end of August, given the construction schedule that we're on.
Perfect. Any other questions from committee members? Yeah, Sam?
I have a question for Joe. I'm so sorry, I forgot to submit a conflict of interest and I believe, I know that Audubon submitted a letter of support to the Yavapai Apache Nation for their water rights settlement.
If you'd like, you can abstain from this conversation.
Thank you. I spoke all the rules, Joe, and you're looking right at me, so I will fill it out after the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions from committee members for the applicant? All right, hearing none. Any general discussion, comments, or concerns on the project? Hearing none, co-benefits, this is supporting the Yavapai Apache Nation. It's in the Verde River Basin, in Yavapai County, so any other co-benefits people want to call out? All right, hearing none. Any public comments?
No requests received, Mr. Chairman.
Great, then I think that is it.
Andrea, girl, I just wanted to add that I think it's a great project. It's, it feels like this is exactly the kind of thing WIFA should be funding.
Great.
All right, so Mr. Chair, I will note, we do have a few applicants who joined us after the time change that we wanted to give the opportunity, especially because you did have as a committee specific questions for those applicants. So I will note right now that if there's anybody around from Yuma County Water Users Association or Yuma County, the Gila Valley Irrigation District, the Roosevelt Irrigation District, or the Pioneer Irrigation Company. So I know we do have somebody from Yuma County Water Users on. Are there anybody else from the others that I mentioned? Okay, seeing none, because we do have someone from the Yuma County Water Users Association on, I will give the committee the opportunity, or that's the word with the chairman, give the committee the opportunity to ask the questions they had prior to, so we'll go back to those grant applications. So on your agenda, that would be number 5.19 and 5.20.
All right, let me turn there. In the meantime, if there's anybody who does, if there are any committee members who do have questions for the applicant?
So I'll remind the committee to, so number 5.19 was the return flow credit maximization project, and then number 5.20, I'll just pull that up quickly, was installation of new gates, gated controls, et cetera.
Any questions from committee members for the applicant? All right, hearing none?
I had some on this one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, as a bit of background, it reads like we're going to be just sending water back upstream and kind of doing some water accounting here. Is there any actual saving, conservation of water that's going to take place, or are we just stopping the water from moving across the border?
Yeah, so.
Charles, if I could just have you introduce yourself before you begin to, please.
You bet. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name's Charles Cowan, Head of Engineering for Yuma County Water Users. It's a pleasure to present and answer any questions you guys have on this project. And to answer your question, sir, the, it, it ends up being water, water resource creation, if you will. I guess the best understand it is, we have, we have nuisance groundwater that if we don't pump it, it becomes a hindrance to agricultural production in general. We literally have groundwater that's as low as or as shallow as one foot down. So by getting rid of this water and creating the additional resources, we're able to pump that into the Sanchez-Mejorada Canal in Mexico under the 1944 treaty, excuse me, the treaty, which would then allow the state of Arizona to maximize its return flow credits up to 140,000 acre-feet a year. That water then can be swept under Arizona's current policies by any junior entitlement holders and used for, however, ADWR, so. and used for however ADWR, so, or whatever the process is for that. So currently, we're, we're underutilizing by about, it ranges anywhere from 20,000 to 40,000 acre-feet a year, just as a matter of, you know, lack of pumping capacity. The association on our own dime, we operate and maintain and provide power for all these pumps, including the relief pumps into Mexico, just as part of our, our, our contribution to, to the greater good, if you will. I don't know if that addressed your question or not.
I'm somewhat, what water that would actually be conserved by doing this, I guess? And I understand how you guys get the credit for it, but is there?
It, yeah, through, through, through water accounting, it actually conserves within Lake Mead itself. By, because those are any, any acre foot that we send across the, the border down through the southerly international boundary, is an acre foot that Mexico cannot order out of Lake Mead, thus conserving it within the reservoir.
Interesting.
Any other questions for the applicant? Just to clarify, we've got questions for the applicant, both on the return flow, which is, I think, 19, and then on, on the gate installations, the skated gate installations, which is 20. So if you have questions on either of them. Oh, yeah, Tim, go ahead.
Tim, you're still on mute. All right, Tim, we can come back to you if you have questions. It looks like you're just still on mute for us.
Any other questions for the applicant on either of these two Yuma County applications, 19 and 20?
I'll ask, I don't know if we're waiting on Tim, but where are we at in the design process procurement, that sort of thing?
In regards to 19 or 20?
Either, I mean.
Either, sure. We've, we've, in advance, we've already procured bids and materials and availability for the pumping project 5.19. So we have contractors on standby, just waiting to be released on this. On 5.20, the engineering, preliminary engineering has been completed by George Cairo Engineering. And then as far as the balance of the other work, it's, it's mostly concrete gates and actuators, all of which we probably have somewhere around a six-to-eight-month lead time on those. But it's, that, that second project is going to definitely be a, a push against the clock, for sure. But we're confident we can expend.
I appreciate you letting us know that. Thank you.
All right, Tim, it looks like you're off mute now.
Yeah, it's getting late in the day. I'm not smart enough to unmute myself. I had a question for the previous one. And what, what quality of wells are you using? I mean, you're gonna, you're throwing them into the canal, or just the drainage?
Yeah, good question. The, the, their wells are designed actually to, or they're placed geographically to go straight into the drainage system, which would then be conveyed by gravity down to our pumping plant. The quality of water is, it's saline, but it still meets the standards as far as what's acceptable for delivery into Mexico. We just don't have the need to put it in our system, because it wouldn't end up in return flow credits to the state of Arizona. It would just be used on farm. The wells themselves will be drilled, excuse me, depending upon the geology, anywhere from 200 to 240 feet down, so they're relatively shallow wells. And then the pump design on this, we're aiming for 2,500 GPM, which is easily attainable. It'll actually end up producing more than that, but the 2,500 is considered a safe estimate for the life of the project.
Okay, so these go into your drainage system, those little, well, they're not little, those canals with the black moss? Yeah, okay. All right, I was just trying to figure out how, how this all looks. So you're looking at 2,500 over the three wells, and those will be shallow, correct?
Yeah, those are fairly shallow, so like I said, they'll be drilled anywhere between 200 to 240 feet down. And, you know, however it ends up being to get the right gravel pack. But the pumps themselves, and that's where we'll screen it, we'll screen it wherever the gravel's good. But the pumps themselves, we set at 80 feet down. It just, because there's an abundance of water, there's no sense in, in going any deeper and having to increase horsepower, or anything like that. We, we get very good performance out of our other wells at 80 feet.
Okay.
To clarify, the 2,500 GPM is per well.
Oh, okay, man, that's a pretty good-sized well.
Yeah, yeah, so what they do is they, they end up, I'm trying to think, I think it's a 32-inch casing, and then the pumps themselves are 12-inch pumps, single-stage turbine-type pumps.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions from committee members for the applicant on either of these applications? All right.
Okay, thank you, committee. I greatly appreciate you coming back and, and taking my, my answers here.
Sure, thank you. All right, I believe that puts us done with the review of the applications in Agenda Item 5.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Look at that. All right. So let's move on to Agenda Item Number 6, which is a call to the public. This is the time for the public to comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Have we received any requests for public comment?
We have, Mr. Chairman. So we have Ben Streisak from Phoenix Christian, who is online, and I will note, has been waiting very patiently since 10:00 AM for the call to the public. So Ben, I have enabled your mic, you'll have to unmute yourself, and you will have three minutes to make your comments.
Well, thank you so much. Once again, my name's Ben Streisak, and I'm the Athletic Director at Phoenix Christian. Let me try to close my office door, because I got a bunch of screaming children at PE outside here. We, we're just grateful for all you guys are doing for the state of Arizona. I have a buddy who actually works for Katie Hobbs, and he recommended that I was writing this policy for the WIFA grant, and recommended I reach out to you guys, because we received some funds from a few other sources. And this was hopefully gonna get us over the hump to do our turf football field at Phoenix Christian. But then I got a sad email last week saying that we were not eligible. So my question was, that we were not eligible because we are not essentially a water, like, conservation company or organization. And just for future reference, because I'd like to give this another, take another swing at this down the road, if, if I misunderstood something, because I was just kind of confused that the reason it said that we weren't selected as one of the 36 today was because we are not a water organization.
Ben, I will throw that question over to our General Counsel, Joe Sotelli.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, Director McGuire. You are not properly agendized to get into that type of a discussion at this point. You, the committee could direct staff to commit further outreach, and specifically to respond directly to Ben. The committee could also agendize this for a future meeting, or the committee could, you know, provide a response to any criticism. I don't believe any has been levied, though, at this point. So those are sort of the committee's options at this point in response to, to Ben's comments. Thank you.
Great. Can I suggest to the committee that if, if, if the committee's okay with this, that we ask staff to do additional outreach?
Sure can, and will do.
Fantastic. Do we, do we need to officially vote on the request for additional outreach?
Nope.
Perfect, great. Thanks so much.
Fantastic. Does that mean that we, I'm sorry, does that mean that you guys are gonna reach out to me about this at a later date, or?
Sure does, yeah. But we'll be in touch with you, probably either sometime today or later this week.
Awesome. And do you want my cell phone number, or via email, or?
Lindsay says we have contact information.
We do have your contact information, so we'll be reaching out via email.
You guys are great. Look forward to hearing from you.
Thanks, Ben.
God bless you guys. Thanks again. Bye.
Any other public comments?
No, Mr. Chair.
Great, then we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Number 7, which is our next meeting. I'll turn that over to Director McGuire as well.
Thank you very much, Professor Larson. Thanks for coming in as our chair.
Hey, look at this.
End of it. We're gonna have to tell Kim that you're the one that actually got this out. So yes, committee members, again, really appreciate your willingness to drop everything and spend so much time with us this week. Our second study session to close out the rest of our applications will be on Friday at 11:00 AM. That is a different start time than it was today, so 11 o'clock AM, but same location, same hybrid format. We will only be hearing applications, or discussing applications, in the Advanced Meters and System Upgrades section, because there are 29 of those. And so we will spend the whole day on those, going through the exact same format that we had here today. So if you do have any questions about that, please let us know. But that will be what we'll, the next time we'll see you, on Friday.
Great. I think that takes us to Agenda Item Number 8, which is one of my very favorite agenda items, adjournment. If there's nothing else, then I will adjourn this meeting of the WIFA Water Conservation Grant Committee. The time is now 2:36 PM. We are now adjourned. Nah, I do my knuckles.